Everybody got quiet all of a sudden. Sorry, didn't mean to yell. Just waiting on our last. We had a meeting there. Our closed session ran right up to time here, so we apologize for a couple of minutes late. Everybody's grabbing their stuff and getting in the room. We're going to reconvene our meeting, and this is our presentation period. I'm going to come down and I'll have some presentations tonight, so give me one minute, and I'll be down there. This is probably the best thing about being the Mayor of Desert Hot Springs is when you actually give to give awards, presentations and those types of things out. It's, you know, a lot of work, working for the city council, but this is probably the most heartwarming stuff that we're able to do here in the City of Desert Hot Springs. I wanted to, we have two presentations tonight. Our first presentation is actually going to be for our local Keon Mixed Martial Arts Studio ladies. Are all four ladies here? All right, would you join me up here? And then I also have representatives from State Senator Melissa Mendez's office, which is Glenn Miller's here. Come on through here and just stand right here. State Assemblyman Adora Garcia's office, is Miguel here? Oh, there you are. You're hiding back there, Miguel. Not like you could hide because you're tall, but come on up here and join me, please, both of you. And then we have, from County Supervisor's office, Manuel Perez's office, we have Stephanie, you're here. Yes, I wanted to make sure it was you behind the masks before I started pointing. I'm going to have them join us up here with the presentations. But first, I wanted to read and talk a little bit about these young ladies here in Desert Hot Springs. First of all, congratulations, you're all four inspirational to all of us here in Desert Hot Springs for what you've accomplished. If you've been living under a rock and haven't paid attention to what's been going on here in Desert Hot Springs, July 30 and August 1st, these four young ladies flew halfway across the world to Sofia, Bulgaria, and they participated in a mixed martial arts tournament. It's actually the Youth Mixed Martial Arts World Championships in Sofia, Bulgaria. This was put on by the International Mixed Martial Arts Federation. When they arrived, there was 300 and over 330 competitors, 23 countries. But what's most impressive about this, to me, after reading all this, was out of 31 competitors from the United States, they were half the women's contingent, the four of them. So that's kind of puts it in perspective that what these young ladies have done here in Desert Hot Springs. Is Eddie here? He is not here. Eddie Bates is the owner and their sensei here in Desert Hot Springs. And first of all, before I get into what they've accomplished, I have to say thank you to him for what he's accomplished here in Desert Hot Springs. He's brought a mixed martial arts studio to Desert Hot Springs over year after year after year. I just hear wonderful stories coming out of there from young men and women in our community and what they've done for them. Two years ago, they were in the Worlds, and there was, I believe, three that went to the Worlds, and this year, there's four. So I can only imagine 10 more years down the line, how many we're going to be having in the World Championships. So awesome. But before, as I get started here, I just wanted to announce who these young ladies are. First, I want to talk about Allison Keenan. Allison, why don't you come right here, stand next to me, so when they're pointing, they point right at you, not embarrass you or anything. You okay with her?
Yeah.
I'm going to have you speak in a few minutes. You okay with that? I'm just joking, you can speak if you want to. Allison is 16 years old, and she has trained at the MMA studio here in Desert Hot Springs since she was 13 for the last three years. She did not want to be there, but she credited to go into the cage fights, you know, when your mom and dad drag you to the, you know, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, and she's like, no. But then she fell in love with it, obviously, and after three years of fighting, she has fell in love with it. That's her words. So congratulations. And then next, I'm just going to scoot over just a little bit. Iran. How are you?
Good.
Is it Iran?
It's Iran.
Iran?
Iran.
I'm going to get it right. I knew I was going to mess that one up. So she actually is 15 years old.
I'm 17.
Wow. I'm sorry, you began at 15.
Yes.
I highlighted the wrong part. So you are 17 years old, you began at 15, so two years into the studios, were you dragged there too? Gabrielle, did you drag her down there? Yeah. You went because you wanted to, right? And she trained, and she walked away with a medal too, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Thank you, just stand right there. And then I have Andrea.
Yeah.
Now, you're 16.
Yeah.
Got that right. She began when she was 11, that's five years ago, and you're still doing this. That's great. I know her dad's in the audience there, and you dragged her a couple of times, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. But she continues to do it, and she says she met with Eddie Bates, or I'm sorry, the parents met with Eddie Bates, and then they got her into class. She was doing some taekwondo, but it wasn't physical enough?
No.
Yeah, you wanted some punching and stuff, right? So she went off and got it with the Keon Studios, and she's been doing that for the last five years. And then last on our list is Hannah. Hannah, you've started when you were 11, and you're now 14.
I'm 14 now.
Yes, okay, just want to make sure I got it right. So you started when you were 11, and now you're 14, three years later, you've found the interest in it after finding an interest by watching on TV the UFC fights. So with all that said, these young ladies traveled halfway across the world, some with their parents, guardians, and they made it over there. Starting with Allison, you went one-for-one and earned a bronze medal in the 16-17-year-old 63-kilogram divisions. Congratulations. How do you say your name?
Iran.
Iran. Is that better? Is that better? I'm going to get it right before night's over. And she actually was in the 16-17-year-old 52-kilogram division, and she went one-for-one and won a bronze medal. And Andrea, she was in the 16-17-year-old 63-kilogram and won a silver medal, won two of the, I think it was a total of four fights she would have to win to get all the way up, and she won two of three. And then Hannah, she went all the way, 13-15-year-old, 57-kilogram, and she is the actual international mixed martial arts foundation youth world champion in her division. So congratulations to all of you. It didn't come cheap for them to travel, and their parents obviously put up a lot of money for this to happen. We all do to our kids to be able to do a lot in our community, but this was a lot to put into them traveling where they did. There was a lot of people in our community that we need to thank for stepping up. I know that Mayor Potem Russell Betts is going to come down. He has a presentation for you right now. And as he's coming down, we want to thank the Shaw Group here in Desert Hot Springs, who actually put together some money, Mayor Potem helped collaborate with them. I believe there's a billboard in Palm Springs coming into Desert Hot Springs, and there's also, there was a welcome home dinner, and there was a presentation by our congressman at their studios. So I'm going to let him give this. Well, Mr. Mayor, you're doing a fabulous job, and so I'm kind of a little taken back by stepping in here. I just wanted to thank all of you for making our city so proud. And I guess we've got a couple of billboards. I don't know how many else are going to put up billboards for you, but you're going to have quite a collection of them. But it just, it was such an amazing job, what you've done going overseas like that and coming back with four medals for our town, and just so, now, so I've got something here for you.
And it doesn't make any difference between the red or the blue.
I guess what I wanted to say to you is that, you know, you've all been down there standing in front of a billboard, getting your picture taken, and it's nice, I really like seeing the pictures come back. And so this is something, go and open up one of those if you want, and this is just something so that, once the billboard's down, you'll still have something to... And without taking up too much more time, the only thing I wanted to say was that my sister was involved in AAU, Women's Track and Field. My dad was the president. So when I was eight or 10 years old, I used to watch the whole process, you know, what it took for the parents and everybody that did all this to make it possible for you guys to go overseas. It's just a lot of dedication, money, and effort by the parents. I just got dragged along because my sister was a long jumper. But, and then it comes to a lot of personal dedication, you know, time when your friends are up doing other things, you're just, you know, you're at the, what do they call it, the dojo, training and practicing and making sure you get everything done. So Amy Shaw from Mission Lakes Marketplace, you know, was the one who funded the billboard, and as soon as I told her, she said, yeah, and she wants to meet with you later. But anyhow, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to take so much time on the presentation, but just really couldn't be any more proud of you, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
So ladies, after we heard literally the day after, I think there was postings all over the day of that you guys were winning, I contacted our staff and said, we've got to do something big from the city council for you guys because you really did represent what Desert Hot Springs is truly about, and it's about leadership, it's about getting what you really deserve, and you guys went and represented a small, little speck town on the map halfway across the world. So again, congratulations on that. We here at the City of Desert Hot Springs want to memorialize that with a plaque, and each of you are going to receive one that says, "The Mayor and the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs hereby honors your name. International Mixed Martial Arts in recognition of your outstanding achievements, winning your medal at the IMMFAF Youth World Championships in Bulgaria 2021. Your community is proud of you." That's the way it goes. And we had talked about, obviously, a billboard by a local business person went up, but the City of Desert Hot Springs has pretty much control of one billboard here in Desert Hot Springs. Roberta tries to keep it as much as she can. And one of the things that we wanted to put on there was really recognition. So over the next 60 days, 30 days?
I think it goes up tomorrow and for 60 days.
So it was, it's going to go up tomorrow. For the next 60 days, your billboard will be on Palm Drive, leaving town on Palm Drive right before you get to Dillon Road, and it'll look like this. And then I have one more ask of you, but I'm going to wait until after presentations are done by the state offices and the county, and just so don't let me forget, I've got one more thing I want to ask you guys. But first, I'm going to invite up Glenn Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What an amazing accomplishment. Ladies, what a ride that must have been, going all the way across the country and then across the ocean, and then bringing back four medals, and couldn't be more proud of you. What a great picture. I'm looking forward to the final picture. But on behalf of Senator Melissa Melendez and 1 million people we represent in the California State Senate, we want to recognize your medals, but also your will and your wit and all your training. I mean, it'll help you in the future. But to all the parents and everyone, congratulations too, because it takes everyone to be able to move forward. So congratulations, ladies.
And from our State Assemblyman's office, there we go.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm extremely honored to be here on behalf of the Assembly member to be able to recognize this outstanding achievement that really is a reflection of the hard work and dedication you all put into your craft. Obviously, you have to make a lot of sacrifices to make this a reality, and our community couldn't be prouder of you. So on behalf of Assemblymember Adora Garcia and the 56th State Assembly District, we have certificates of recognition as a ref, to honor your outstanding achievement, and we're hoping that you bring home some more medals next year.
And from our County Supervisor's office, Stephanie?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Stephanie Vieden with the Office of Supervisor Perez, and I apologize, I'm having a hard time speaking. I just came back from the dentist, so there's that. But hopefully, I'm allowed to say this, if I'm ever in trouble, I will be calling you ladies, for sure. I'll keep it short. Thank you so much for your dedication and for everything that you do. You're setting an incredible example for women across the world, in the country, in the county, in the state, and also for youth. So thank you, ladies.
And before we take, we're going to take a minute to take a couple of photos real quick, and then I do have other presentations, but you can hang out, because after those presentations, you can come up here and take some more photos with family, whatever you want, okay? But before you leave, I have a special request as mayor. We don't have any grand marshals for the Christmas parade this year, so would you be our grand marshals?
Yes.
Or holiday parade, however you want to, you know, say it. December 11th, it'll be an evening event again, and it's going to start at the top of town, lead right into our holiday celebration, and you guys are going to be the main attraction to that as our grand marshals. So really appreciate that, thank you. Would you like to say anything? You don't have to.
Can I say something? I just want to say thank you to everyone that supported us, and I want to say thank you to my coach, Eddie Bates, and all the people that helped me, Andrea, Allison, and Iran get to Bulgaria. And that was it. I just want to say thank you to everybody.
Anything else you want to say, you don't have to.
Yeah, I can. Basically, the same thing as Hannah, you know, like, we're all family. I'm really glad that this year it was more than like two people, you know, and it was really nice just to be with them. And I would like to thank my coach, Eddie Bates, and as well as my parents for supporting
I want to thank city council and everybody who helped put a lot of attraction to us and all of the celebrations and awards, and for making us feel so welcome back home. And I want to thank my sensei and my family and my teammates and everyone in this room for being here.
I want to thank Mr. Russell Betts for helping us, and Congressman Raul Ruiz for helping me and my mother with our passports. And I would like to thank sensei Eddie Bates, and as well as my boxing coach, Howell Diaz, for helping me and helping me train to go overseas. Thank you.
Ladies, if you want to line up back here, we'll get the tall people in the back, you in the front, we'll get a couple of pictures, and then we've got a couple more presentations. Can you squeeze in there? Roger, why don't you come down here? Roger. You want to?
Thank you so much.
I'm going to invite up, so we have lifeguards here in Desert Hot Springs. Unfortunately, our pool is only open for a short period of time right now, but, you know, over these last few summers, a couple of our lifeguards have worked for us, and we got some new ones in, but what happens is they're always young, because there's old people, like Glenn and I can't just do it anymore. So these young people come in, they lifeguard, they sit in the sun, they get tan, and what we wanted to use tonight is honor them, say thank you, and talk about a life-saving measure that they took to save someone's life. So I'm going to invite up Jasmine, Christian, George, and Jessica. All right, Jasmine, you're first. Don't hide there, don't hide back there. Come on up here. Jasmine has worked with the John H. Furby Aquatic Center as a lifeguard since 2019. In May, she started 2019. She continued, currently attends CSUSB Palm Desert Campus. She is in nursing school, and will graduate with a bachelor's degree in nursing in 2022. She plans on working in neonatal intensive care unit. That's with the babies, right? Oh, that's fun. And so she's from the desert here, her mom works here. She's, and she's been done a fantastic job on lifeguarding here in Desert Hot Springs. And so I'm going to have you stand right there. Christian, up here. Christian has worked with the John H. Furby Aquatic Center as a lifeguard since May of 2021. He graduated from Desert Hot Springs High School in June, and will be attending La Sierra University. Where's La Sierra?
It's in Riverside.
Okay, good, you're not far. He is majoring in criminal justice. Chief, did you hear that? Where's our chief? I know deputies here somewhere, I saw them. And he's going to, he wants to work in probation.
Yep.
Congratulations, thank you. George? George? You're brothers, aren't you?
Yeah.
Aren't you the older brother?
Yeah.
He's taller than you. George actually has worked at the John H. Furby Aquatic Center as a lifeguard since May 2019. He is a junior at Cal State Fullerton, majoring in computer science. Luke, that's up your alley, wasn't it? Yeah. He plans on becoming a computer engineer when he graduates. Great. Jessica? We don't know you, where are you from? So this is a young lady that's famous in our videos, if you saw at the beginning, she's the one filling out the speaker cards. Her mom's over there. Jessica has worked at the John H. Furby Aquatic Center as a lifeguard since May 2019. She was born and raised in Desert Hot Springs. She attends UC Irvine, is a majoring in psychology, we can all use a little bit of that. She plans on completing her education and returning to the community she grew up in and be a family marriage psychologist. These are our youth that are out there when you need to swim in Desert Hot Springs, watching over you all those hours. But what was really warm to our hearts was on Saturday, June 12th, at the John H. Furby Aquatic Center, the lifeguards spring into action, performed life-saving measures on an individual that was found to be drowning in our pool. They did those life-saving measures until the fire and EMS arrived, and the lifeguards are being recognized today for their quick action, their role in saving this person's life. This is a certificate of recognition. On behalf of the mayor and the city council of the City of Desert Hot Springs, we hereby honor you in grateful recognition of your outstanding services and heroic action on June 12th. Do you guys like to say anything?
Just thank you.
All right. With that, let's give them one more round of applause, we're going to take some pictures. I had them sit down, I should not have, they also have presentations for you.
Again, Glenn Miller from Senator Melissa Melendez's office, and what an honor to be able to recognize these four individuals for saving a life. As somebody, I know it's their job to do it, but when it actually happens and you spring into action, be able to do what you need to do is what is definitely needed in these days. But what an opportunity to shine for Desert Hot Springs, and thank you very much for your patriotism and making sure that people are safe when you're out there and doing your job. Thank you.
Miguel Romero, again, with the Office of Assemblymember Adora Garcia. Extremely proud to be able to recognize the actions of these lifeguards on this one instance where they saved a life of an individual, but also highlighting the actions you take every day to keep our community safe while they are at the center. I'm sure this is a very prominent incident, but I'm sure every day you are, make sure that incidents like this don't happen. So thank you for your service and hearing the goals and achievements, and goals and plans you all have. We are very excited to see what the future holds for you, as you all plan to, you all continue hoping to serve our community. Congratulations.
Hello again, Stephanie Vieden, here on behalf of the Office of Supervisor Perez. And wow, you know, the youth in Desert Hot Springs, you guys are doing incredible things. The fact that you take your time to be part of your community and do all this work, I know it's going to pay off. And today, you know, you're, we're recognizing your quick action, and you saved a life. That does not go unnoticed. I know whoever the person may be is very grateful, but I think also their family, what you did for them was amazing, it's incredible, and it's definitely not going unnoticed. So thank you, guys.
Again, I want to thank the State Senators' Office, Assemblymen's Office, and the County Supervisor's Office for having their representatives come out today and help recognize our youth in our community. Our youth are important to us, we talk about it all the time, it's not a joke, it really is, seriously, the youth are our future. And so thank you to you parents out there that are raising such good kids. I really appreciate that. With that said, we are close to 6 o'clock for our regular meeting, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll start at 6:05. If any of the parents want to get pictures and stuff, feel free to come on up here.
Yeah, probably. But they're going to try to do something first, and see what happens. If Matt don't need to talk to you. Yeah, it's hard, but that's why, we're going to try it one way, if not, we're going to try, just to, they'll need some information, not so much for you, but we're trying to afford it, because that could speed it up, but let them try it first, what they're going to do first. If they need you, I'll get ahold of you, and we'll go that way.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. All right. Hey?
What's going on?
Just, I've been, we put, I didn't like saying, I'm trying to organize. So people organizing the. Okay. Okay. I'll try to get somebody. We actually have, there's a, so I have someone going to that, you know, just to head up. What time is that one?
It's in the evening. I think it's at seven.
I'll, can you, can you send that to me?
I'll get your board on Sunday.
Well, here, I'll give it to you. You're going to be there?
I'm going to try to, I have like three things.
Seven six oh, four zero eight, four two six five. All right, thank you.
Do you see how it's red?
All right. We're going to get started here in about 30 seconds. Russ, Robert, you're the last two standing, obviously. Got deputy chief over there, but everybody was here for the pomp and circumstance, but you two, you two have nothing else to do in your lives, do you? All right, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the city council and the city council serving as a successor agency to the former redevelopment agency board for Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. This is our 6:00 p.m. regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gardner?
Present.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tembets?
Present.
And Mayor Menace?
Present.
Thank you.
Let's see, our invocation tonight, we do not have a pastor, but we've been.
Recording in progress.
We're live now. But Ms. Pye is going to give the invocation tonight.
Okay, for me, becoming isn't about arriving somewhere or achieving a certain aim. I see it instead as forward motion, a means of evaluating, a way to reach continuously toward a better self. The journey doesn't end. Michelle Obama.
Thank you for that. Tonight, we're going to take a moment of silence. First, as I announced at our special meeting a couple of weeks ago, a longtime volunteer fireman, Frank Cabrera, in the city of Desert Hot Springs, 30 years with the volunteer fire department with Cal Fire, and he passed away of a stroke on August 12th. His picture will pop up here on the screen as soon as Gerald gets it. Attended, was able to attend his service last week and speak on behalf of the volunteer fire department, but I thought he really deserves some sort of recognition. Again, 30 years serving the community of Desert Hot Springs, Cathedral City, and North Palm Springs. He was a very well-liked individual. As you can see that smile, he always had that smile on his face, and he did a lot of good for our community here in Desert Hot Springs. Also, we, the 13 men and women that lost their lives protecting our country in the Middle East, we'd like to take a moment of silence for them, two of them being from Riverside County and one locally here in the Coachella Valley. So we're going to stand, take a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please bow your heads. If you please join me in pledging to our nation's flag. Ready, begin. Thank you very much. Our next item is the city attorney's report on closed session. Ms. Murray?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We don't have any reportable action formally, however, councilmember Betts did recuse himself for parts of the meeting in the belief that the scope of the closed, the conversation was outside the scope of closed session. That said, we do have an item on the agenda for open session.
All right. With that said, the approval of the agenda will be next. At this time, city council may amend the order of the agenda and approve the consent counters whole. We have items, let's see, eight through 12. Is there any items on there anyone from the city council would like to pull off for discussion? Hearing none on entertaining.
Ms. Murray, I'm sorry. On the register of, the payment register, I have one question, so just be.
Which number is that?
I think it's.
There's nine and 10 on the payment registers.
Be nine.
Nine. Okay, go ahead. Well, did the question satisfy you now, or did you want us to pull it for discussion later?
Pull it later.
Pull it later? Okay, so we pull on item nine. Will we, if the council chooses to approve the agenda in whole and items eight through 12, do we have any public comments on items eight through 12?
No, we do not.
Nothing? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, just a motion and a second. Wait for the second to come through. Please vote.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I believe there's some issue with the Zoom online. People are trying to get in, can't get in.
It's, it's fine. I actually have someone in there now.
Great. Awesome. With that said, the item, go ahead.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to public comments at this time pursuant to the Brown Act. Any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. Speakers may not yield their time to others without consent of the mayor. All comments are to be directed to city councils, shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. Do we have any public comments on Zoom?
I had one person registered, however, they are not on Zoom. I don't know if that's the person having trouble getting in.
If they do come in, will you let me know?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have anybody in the audience that is registered for a comment?
No, we do not.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the city council on non-agendized items? See nobody coming forth, we'll close public comments at this time unless we can get that individual back up on the screen and then we'll bring them back during the meeting. City manager's report.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I have announcements from several departments. I'd like to start with our chief of police, Jim Henson, who has an announcement.
I'd like to announce we're going to have a town hall meeting at the Word Alive Church on Pearson Tuesday, September 14th at 6:00 p.m. We'll give an update as far as the police department and we'll take any questions, concerns on that date.
Thank you. And finance update from our finance director, Jeffrey Buckheim.
All right, thank you for the financial highlights for this fiscal year as of September 7th, 2021. Current revenues are 1.3 million, which is at 5% of the budget, and current expenditures are at 4.4 million, which is 15% of the budget. At this time last year, the revenues were 1.2 million at 5%, and in 1920 was over a million at 5%. At this time last year for expenditures, revenues were 4 million at 15%, and for fiscal year 1920 were 3.9 million at 16%. I did, I am doing a three-year comparison to show fiscal year 19 is pre-COVID-19 pandemic, fiscal year 2021 as a COVID, during the COVID pandemic, and then the current year. So have a different perspective for you there. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeffrey. And we have some announcements from Roberta Sernick, our executive program manager.
Thank you, Luke. I just wanted, I have a quick slideshow. I just wanted to show you some fun photos of the Desert Hot Springs Recreation Coed Basketball League. We completed registration and we have a total of 78 kids that joined the league. We have eight volunteer coaches and three volunteer referees. And thanks to a generous sponsor, Royal Emerald Pharmaceuticals, Desert Hot Springs residents were able to join for free. And here's their practice and game schedule if anyone's interested in watching them practice or for game days. They practice Mondays and Wednesdays from 5:00 to 6:00, and games for ages eight, nine, 10, and 11 are on Thursdays from 5:00 to 7:00, and 12 to 14 are on Fridays from 5:00 to 6:30. So everything is going great. I'm excited to see some games. And we also opened the basketball gym in the mornings as well. In case someone wants to play basketball in the mornings, it's now open from 10:00 to noon. That is all. Thank you.
Does that include the weekends?
Right now, it's only open Monday through Wednesday.
Thank you.
And finally, we have some updates on projects and some special announcements from our public works director, Nick Hayker.
Good evening. Some road updates, road construction updates. Van Dyke is scheduled to remove and replace the asphalt berm on Flora between Atlantic Avenue and Villa Loretto this Thursday. MPL, the subcontractor for SoCal Gas, is doing line upgrades for the following locations. These locations are also under the city website, under Public Works on upcoming construction projects. There's quite a bit, so just letting you know where they're at. On Buena Vista Avenue from Cactus to Palm, on Estrella from Cactus to Palm, on Third Street from West to Palm, on Quea from Cactus to Palm, on First Street from Cactus to Palm, on Hacienda from Tamar to Casa Loma, on Acoma from Cactus to Palm, on West from Pearson to Fifth Street, on Santa Rosa from West to Santa Cruz, on Desert View from Cactus to Palm, on Second Street from Cactus to Palm, at Buena Vista and Ocatillo, or sorry, at Buena Vista and Ocatillo, on Fourth Street from Cactus and Palm, and on West from Mission Lakes Boulevard to Avenue de Barona. Again, these locations are on the website. I do have a slideshow. Very, very honored and very excited about these projects. We won the American Public Works Association's Project of Merit Awards for 2021. We won three of these. What is APWA? The American Public Works Association is a national organization that serves the public works community by promoting professional excellence and public awareness through education, advocacy, and the exchange of knowledge. There's over 30,000 members, which includes local, county, state, federal agencies, and private sector. The city of Desert Hot Springs is in the Coachella Valley branch of the Southern California chapter. The Coachella Valley, the Coachella Valley branch of the Southern California chapter of APWA established the Projects of Merit, POM, awards to promote excellence in public works projects and to recognize outstanding capital improvement projects and public works programs, share the positive experience displayed in these projects and programs, showcase the variety, caliber, and quality nature and work performed by the agencies for projects delivered to the public. The three awards that the city of Desert Hot Springs received for 2021 for Coachella Valley APWA Projects of Merit Award are structures for New City Hall, Traffic and Mobility, the Palm Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project, and Revitalization, which is the Palm Drive Entryway and Monument Project. New City Hall, we, again, we won this. Our primary consultant on this project was STK. Our primary contractor on this was RC Construction. Just a couple of highlights, the public, or the New City Hall is a single-story facility with 12,000 square feet, housing department offices for planning, building, fire, public works, engineering, and the city manager's office. It also has the council chambers, emergency operations center, customer service counter, customer service lobby, a large conference room, study session room, and city council offices. It was designed for the current needs and the future expansion, which will include traffic control center. For transportation, we won the Palm Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project. The primary consultant was Omniss Incorporated. The primary contractor was Desert Concepts Construction. The scope of this project included widening, buffering, buffered bicycle lanes, narrowing traffic lanes, closing gap closures and sidewalk, installation of 35 LED SCE streetlights, adding raised crosswalk medians and ADA access, bus warning lights and signs, reduced speed limits, and streetlights throughout the product area. Added scope of work included sections of asphalt to be removed and replaced, and slurrycoats to resurface the entire road surface. And finally, revitalization, the award we won was for the Palm Drive Entryway Monument Project. Primary consultant was Desert Concepts Construction. The primary contractor was Desert Concepts Construction. This consisted of installation of 30 palm trees and various plants, including acatillos, agavas, and barrow cactuses. It also included ground cover, decorative rock, block, wall installation, sidewalk installation, ADA accessible ramps. Color-changing LED decorative lights were installed on the palm trees and on the ground for uplighting. The monument is an Oculus design with the city's logo etched into the center in the glass, encompassing the Oculus is the decorative river rock. At night, changeable LED decorative lighting illuminates the monument as all enter the city. To celebrate and honor the residents of Desert Hot Springs, the city has a palm tree lighting program for the Palm Tree, for the Palm Drive Entryway and Monument Project. The palm trees will change colors throughout, through the use of LEDs to celebrate various holidays, community group acknowledgements, and the Desert Hot Springs High School graduating class. Congratulations to Desert Hot Springs.
Thanks, Nick. And congratulations to both you and Danny Pores for continuing to lead staff. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, and let's give them a round of applause for putting that. Thank you, guys, for making Desert Hot Springs shine. Did a fantastic job. Go to the council member comments this time. I'll start with Mr. Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tell you, it's so nice to see the gym open, and I know it took a staff effort to get that done, and I want to also give special shout-out to Roberta, who's been organizing that effort. And I think everybody agrees, she's been doing a great job on that. It is so nice to see that open. We sat for years without being able to use that facility because we didn't own it yet, and we own it now. And so anyhow, great, great job. And good job on all the other stuff there. We got those awards for, holy cow. We watch that stuff piece by piece happen, and then as it presented like that all at once, you go, wow, we're really making some progress. On, we've been away for a while, so I got a few things I want to cover. I'm not going to take too long. I'll try and go through this as quick as I can, but on 4th of July and New Year's, our city has a real serious problem with illegal fireworks. And several years back, the council took action to try and correct that, and what they did was they authorized $5,000 of seed money to hire people for special enforcement to go out there and try and abate and to suppress this illegal fireworks. So, and then since then, we've. So, and then since then, we've issued some fines, which have, you know, added money to the pot to make officers, extra officers, extra patrols available. So I'm concerned despite all these significant funds, that obviously we've still got a very serious fireworks problem going on. And we're heading into the new year, and I'm starting, we even have fireworks going off now, but I'm starting to get requests from neighbors to, hey, can you deal with our neighborhood? Can you deal with our neighborhood? So all the point of bringing that stuff now is to ask our city manager if you could make a presentation to the council in the next couple of meetings to let us know what our plans are going to be, how this money is going to be used, how many officers, extra officers are going to be on a patrol, to see what we're going to do so we can try and get a handle on this. This is something that's going on all over California. You see the pictures of LA, it's a nightmare. And so I just, I would like to just know, you know, we've authorized this money, how's it going to be spent? What's the plan? Couple of meetings back, we initiated an economic development effort for a hotel in our city. And their, their plan is they're going to expand their business. And I'm wondering if we have any kind of update on any program that's being put in place. The talk was that we're going to try and put this plan together for other hotels and other businesses. I'm sitting there looking at this, seems like a really excellent tool for our economic development team to be able to go out there and take some of these hotels. I know it works really well in Palm Springs. And I want to see if we could get some kind of update on that either now or at a future meeting. Do we have any, do we have, I'm sure everybody here is sitting there saying, Russ, don't you remember, we talked about this. But if I could just get an update now.
I'll talk about it during my, my presentation.
Okay, so I can wait for that. The COVID testing center at DeSco Park, I understand, is open Thursday through Saturday right now. And I'm getting lots of requests from businesses. They have to test their employees, and I'd love to see that open five days a week. And then apparently there's some issue with students that when they have to test to go back to school, they're having a hard time finding a testing center local. And if they got to get back on Monday, it's not there, and waiting till Thursday is a real hardship. So the only point of bringing this up is if we can, whatever we can do to, that's the county run. So if we can get the county to get that back to full days again, I think the need's there. But I'll, if I could just make that request. I attended the Southern California Association of Governments meeting, and we had a presentation on the proposed train service from Los Angeles to Indio. And I know the mayor's been following that, RCTC. This presentation I had was the longest one I've seen. It was 20 minutes and a lot of detail there. The main takeaway is that we're looking at about 10 years before that rail service is realized. My understanding from this presentation was that the EIR and everything associated with that's going to take five years. And then the actual engineering and build would be another five years. So it's, you know, it's, someday it might happen. We'll just see. Anyhow, that, that impacted the city here, so I thought I better get that mentioned. Six weeks ago, I got in touch with an organization called Grid Alternatives. They've been in here, in our city installing solar panels in the past, what, five years or so, they've installed 180 solar panel installations. And between now and December, they want to install 100 more. Now, what these do is these are income qualified, and it's not a lot of, it's not a lot of qualifications needed here. It's a family of one. The income qualification is $42,000 a year, family of two, $48,000. Family of three, $54,000. Family of four, $60,000 a year income, and you qualify to get these in your house. There's a geographic qualification also, but most of the city is in it. So working with the staff and the mayor, a letter was put together and mailed out to a lot of people, and the letter's already gone out. So if you get this letter in the mail, it's not one of these annoying solar companies. It's actually us, the city, saying that this is a program that, and the main takeaway on this one is that it's free solar, absolutely free. You don't have a contract. They put it on, there's no deed restriction on your house. It's just part of a government program to provide solar for low and moderate, low and low moderate income. Sunline Transit started up its regular schedule again for the past year. It's been operating on what was called a modified Sunday schedule, which means the buses weren't running fast enough for some of the riders. We got lots of complaints from people asking that please go back to the 20-minute schedule, which they've done. It was a big effort to get Desert Hot Springs on the 20-minute schedule, and it's nice to see we're back. Like a lot of people, eight companies having trouble hiring people. So if you're looking for work, like everybody else, Sunline Transit's hiring. But it should be working okay. Now it's 20 minutes between bus stops, or between the bus arriving at the, the station. And then also at Sunline, we've expanded the Sun Ride program. If you're familiar with Uber and Lyft, well, Sunline has a system very much like it. It's an app on your phone. You simply summon a ride, they'll come and get you, and they'll, they don't take you anywhere you want to go, but they'll take you to the main bus line. And what's nice about that is that, you know, these are a long walk sometime in the heat. And so this is mostly in Desert Edge and reaching out into parts of Desert Hot Springs now. But, so that, that's a good program. And that's expanding throughout, based on the pilot program that was conducted here, you know, in our vicinity, our neighborhood, Desert Hot Springs. It's now been expanded to other cities in the Coachella Valley. So you can get a ride to the bus line and then get on your way where you need to go. And sometimes that'll get you to the store anyhow. This week, I have meetings at Sea Vag Energy and Environment, where they're taking up community choice again. I don't know why, but anyhow. And then at the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back after our, after our rather long break, and I had a chance to spend a couple of weeks in my hometown of Salt Lake City and came back after two weeks being gone. And I have to say, I'm really pleased, and I wanted to give kudos to our public work staff and our trash removal staff. The city is looking remarkably clean. Our new efforts are really, really paying off. Not to say that we're anywhere close to being done, but it was remarkable, and it was very noticeable to me after being, having been gone for, for two weeks. And so, great job with that, guys. Had one meeting during the, during the interim, Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy. And I'm happy to report we've approved, beginning the environmental review on a number of new hiking trails, including Blind Canyon here in Desert Hot Springs. Once the EIRs are done, in the spring of next year, we can hopefully start construction later next year. Blind Canyon is one of the more simple ones. The only landowners are the city and the Metropolitan Water District and the Bureau of Land Management. And the trail is mostly already there. So it should be one of the first finished ones once the EIR for all of the trails is done. And this will be a wonderful addition to our trail map system here. Beautiful views of the city, and it's, it's a nice, it's a nice two, three-mile loop. Had some really nice coverage as well as another possible trail, Swiss Canyon, that was in the Yucan Report, and that's another one of my favorite ones. Has absolutely stunning views of the city. Now the temperatures are cooling down, hopefully, coming up, we can get out and do some more of that. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few things. I just wanted to let everybody know, council and staff tonight, that they're going to be honoring the candlelight visual for Captain Hunter Lopez in the Indio City Hall. They've requested to see if we can get some staff and also the chief of police or a representative. So it's tomorrow night at 8:00 PM, or 7:00 PM at Indio City Hall. I think that's a great opportunity to show the City of Desert Hot Springs supports our military. And those fallen. Just want to recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. I want to thank Councilwoman Jan Pie for giving me this information. Just a brief update, Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated annually from September 15th to October 15th. The timing coincidences with Independence Day of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, which I didn't know. I think this is good information. Thank you for, for sharing that information with me. And lastly, I just want to say we had an opportunity to host the Mexican consulate here this last past month to help serve our residents with, with needs of matriculas, citizenship, dual citizenship, and then Mexican passports. So I want to thank staff for putting that together. I think it was, it was overwhelmingly, I think they were kicking people out of there, I think. So I look forward to the next one. I'm hoping we can have it here at city hall, and I'll be available for any talks that we need to, to have to make that happen. Thank you.
Ms. Pie?
What I wanted to say is when I talk to someone on the council meeting, I'd like for you to listen to me. Same thing happened with Gary Gardner, not knowing what I was talking about. On the day that I started the tram, spa, stall, I'm sorry, from the 8th, the 1st to the 11th, I only dealt with kids from 8 to 12. And it's taken me hard to get there, so just wear with me. My kids that I, that I voted on that day was about spa, spa down, spa dead. And I said we would take a moment to do it because I wanted it to be fully employed, employed and knowing, and not knowing who would be employed for them. So the decision was that we would set the sojourn for the cognum in August. Because of the time that it takes, it's not August, it's going to be October. So instead of putting it in September, we're starting in October. And the reason why we're taking a moment on it is we need to figure out how much it's going to cost for 20 to 21. And I think it's the 10-year, Gardner, and it's not just giving people pregnant. Sorry. It's not just putting it out there, it's showing, can we do it? And how we're going to do it. And it was totally separate from Maria Elise. It was not putting the same, doing the same thing because we have to figure out how many people and what we can and can't do. Now, the other thing is on Palm Springs of the, Palm Springs International Airport, and it's coming good. The city, for the best month, I'll just tell you, for July is 32 more than it was before. It was minus 71 in January, and that was for employment. For total passengers, it's come up to 32. And these are the best posts between 219, 220, and 2021. And we got 129, 463 for total passengers. There's two other hospitalities for Holliday. Rosachana is literally the hair of the year. Is the Jewish New Year, it is a time of inner renewal and divine atonement. This year, Rosa Hacienda, did I say that right?
The New Year's Rosachana, yeah.
Okay. It ends at sundown on Monday, September 6th. For those who observe two days, it ends at sundown on Wednesday, September 8th. And there's a customary, customary to have big feasts on both nights of Rosa Hacienda, and there are thus a lot of custom dishes, including honey cake, bristle, and more Hacienda recipes. And the other thing was some, I know colors, at least myself, will know about this, but some of them who are younger may not know what happened yesterday so far as Labor Day is concerned. Labor Day 21 will occur on Monday, September 6th. Labor Day pays tribute to the contribution and amendments of American workers and is traditionally observed on the first Monday in September. It was created by the labor movement in the late 19th centuries and became a federal holiday in 1894. So the labor isn't just about getting tickets for, or teacher for children, and it's not just about getting a lot of catering or bowling, doing bowler to use. It's about the punch, about the punching of doing Labor Day. And I think I better stop.
Thank you, Ms. Pie. I'm going to get through my report real quick. Yes.
Just wanted to add on to Mrs. Pie. I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, it's Rosachana, it's, this marks the 5,781th year. Is that, is that correct? Am I?
Come on, Jennifer, how is your history?
I think somebody honestly would have to look it up, the token here. Yeah, I'm not, I think you're correct.
Thank you. I'm going to go through my, my comments real quick. I think a lot of the issues we're having with the county COVID testing is that a lot of our pharmacies are doing the rapid testing now. So when the staff does look into that with the county, please look at the local pharmacies. I know when my girls were taken out of school because they were exposed, they went over to, I think it was Rite Aid or Vons, and got a rapid test immediately. So I think that's some of the reason the county is backing off because of the local businesses. It was a long little break we had, but we had a lot of meetings in between. I didn't take much of a break. Had two or two bunch palms, I spoke at Rotary. As Mr. Betts alluded to, Grid Alternatives came with the, literally, this is the last, I think, million dollars that can be spent on solar. So if you have a chance, you see that letter, you do qualify, jump on it as quick as you can because it won't be available much longer for free solar. Lenar Homes had their grand opening, and I believe the first weekend out in Skyborne, they sold 10 homes, we heard. And so I can only imagine how many they've sold since. As the chief said, they announced today that the Word of Life has a town hall with our police department almost every year. And this year's will be next Tuesday at 6:00 PM at Word of Life Church on Pearson Boulevard. Cleanup Committee's been working really hard, and they're going to have an update here real soon. I'm going to bring George, our chairman, George P. D. R., our chairman, in to give a report to the city council in the next month or so. Parks Committee, we just formed our Parks Committee, Mr. Nunes and I did. We're having a second meeting on the 23rd. I had a Zoom meeting with Palm Springs Unified School District and the superintendent and our board representative over school resource officers. And we'll be bringing, our police chief will be bringing a report later as he receives MOU from them on how we're going to move forward with that issue. I also had a call with the new CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, Emily Falapino. She, I wanted to introduce herself and talk about where she came from and how she'll be leading the, the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce moving forward. They are also going to be hosting the State of the City, which will be October 21st at the Health and Wellness Center, and everybody will be invited. Sea Vag Transportation had its, had its meeting on the 30th. It was my last meeting as chairman for this, this term. We have about seven meetings a year, and the next chairman is Coachella, and then it just continues to rotate. During that meeting, we talked about hiring a lobbyist with all the federal money coming down the pipe. Sea Vag, because you utilize cities and Riverside County Transportation for so long, but really never advocated just for the needs of Coachella Valley. So they're going to hire a temporary lobbyist and then look for a longer-term contract with another firm. One of the suggestions is not to use a firm that's already being used in the Coachella Valley so that we have multiple parties working towards the needs of our, our valley. Also attended a Riverside County Transportation meeting, which was budget implementation committee meeting. And that basically was a long meeting on refinancing some bonds and those types of things. Thought that our financing of our bonds was a long discussion. Should have been there for this one. It was over a billion dollars, so you can imagine the, the long discussion. Congratulations again to Public Works for what you guys have done. You really highlight our city, and it's, it's always great. I always say from local level, it's one of the most fantastic political jobs you can have because we can get out and feel in touch with the difference that's made in our communities. But without our staff behind- But without our staff behind us, it doesn't happen. We're just five people up here making decisions from about a 30,000-foot view, or should be. And a lot of times, you guys don't get the credit you deserve, and those awards should be in your offices, and giving you guys credit for what you've done. So congratulations on that. And then last, I'd like to announce, I talked to our, can we call you the Rec Director now? I know you have a different title, but I keep referring, I don't know what Roberta's title is half the time, but I always call her something that she's not. So now I'm gonna start calling her the Rec Director. She handles most of our recreational programs here in Dodger Hot Springs. So with that basketball league, which is really important for our youth, they've got it all situated. I asked her today if there was an evening that's not so packed, and she stated that Wednesday evenings aren't so packed there. So we're gonna start an old guys league, over 40. Anyone wants to come out and exercise, we're just gonna do three and three pickup games, and if you're over 40, come on out. It's, I think, $50 a year to sign up for register, or you can pay per day that you come out. Just come to the Health and Wellness Center there, sign up, and you can come play. I'm going to get myself out there. But I heard we've been challenged too recently. The city staff and city council's been challenged to play a game, so I gotta get in shape for that. So if you're over 40, over 40 league, come on out, have some fun, it'll just be some exercise, and I'm sure, it's two hours long, six to eight. I'm sure the first day will be about 6:05 to 6:10, and then I'll be heading home, but if you're there, I really appreciate that.
Ladies, what I understand is that the eight to 12-year-olds have challenged the city council. I can just, we might as well just concede right now with this group up here to the eight to 12-year-olds.
I totally agree with you.
I'm fine with that, Roberta, so.
I'm sorry, all I wanted to know is do we bring helmet and pads for these games? No street rules, we're over 40, so you guys know, as soon as you touch each other, something's gonna break, so no touch. But no, yeah, it'll be fun just to get out, do some exercising, and get those lungs cleared up again, so please do that. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take about a five-minute break, and we'll be back.
You know where Luke's at?
I'm not sure.
Great. We're going to reconvene our meeting at this time. If you've been watching our meeting, Councilwoman Jan Pie has said that I can make the announcement that she's had a medical emergency and she's heading to Desert Regional Medical Center right now. And she's in great care by Cal Fire and AMR. And we'll get you an update as soon as possible. But her vital signs were good and she was speaking and she was good and healthy. But there's some things that we're really concerned about. So prayers with her. With that said, our agenda looks pretty light here. We have some routine items. There is an item number seven which was actually going to be put on the agenda based on one of the decisions that she had made. And because she's not going to be here, we're going to table item number seven for tonight. With that, we'll move into public hearings at this time. Item number three is an ordinance amending certain sections of the chapter 17.0104, hearings and appeals, section 17.112.020, the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, to implement a more streamlined process of appeals and directors' decisions. We're going to have a report by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, the item before you tonight is an ordinance that amends a few separate sections of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to allow for appeals of directors' decisions to go directly to city council, except the appeals of directors' decisions related to architecture, landscape, and design, which would go directly to the planning commission. Currently, the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code sets forth the procedures of public hearings and appeals. And currently, that procedure requires an appeal of a director decision, go first to the planning commission, and then if it gets further appealed, it gets appealed to the city council. So this was a cumbersome process and hopefully the changes in the municipal code will streamline the process. With that said, you should have received an updated ordinance with some tweaks specifically related to the appeals of the director's decisions specifically related to landscaping, architecture, and design going directly to the planning commission. And we also have, I believe, copies for any members of the public as well with that new language. That concludes my staff report and I am happy to answer any questions.
At this time, we'll entertain questions from the city council before we open the public hearing. Do I have anybody who would like to speak or ask questions?
Any questions?
So we were just handed a piece of paper just now. Is this something that was changed from what was in the original agenda packet?
It was. It was changed with modifications specifically to what I just said about planning, appeals of director decisions going to the planning commission specifically related to landscaping and design and architecture. Thank you.
Okay. So I would, you know, raise the point that something substantive change like this should be properly noticed with 72 hours and getting something here on the dais as a change right now would tell me that this probably is something that shouldn't go forward tonight, that it should be properly noticed. This is a substantive change. But I don't know, you know, I'm happy to have an opinion the other way on that one.
You know where Luke's at?
I'm not sure.
Great. We're going to reconvene our meeting at this time. If you've been watching our meeting, Councilmember Jan Pie has said that I can make the announcement that she's had a medical emergency and she's heading to Desert Regional Medical Center right now. And she's in great care by Cal Fire and AMR, and we'll get you an update as soon as possible. So, but her vital signs were good and she was speaking and she was good and healthy, but there's some things that we're really concerned about, so prayers with her. With that said, our agenda looks pretty light here. We have some routine items. There is an item number seven, which was actually going to be put on the agenda based on one of the decisions that she had made. And because she's not going to be here, we're going to table item number seven for tonight. With that, we'll move into public hearings at this time. Item number three is an ordinance amending certain sections of the chapter 17.0104, hearings and appeals, section 17.112.020, the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, to implement a more streamlined process of appeals and directors' decisions. We're going to have a report by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is an ordinance that amends a few separate sections of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to allow for appeals of directors' decisions to go directly to city council, except the appeals of directors' decisions related to architecture, landscape, and design, which would go directly to the planning commission. Currently, the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code sets forth the procedures of public hearings and appeals, and currently that procedure requires an appeal of a director decision go first to the planning commission, and then if it gets further appealed, it gets appealed to the city council. So this was a cumbersome process, and hopefully the changes in the municipal code will streamline the process. With that said, you should have received an updated ordinance with some tweaks specifically related to the appeals of the director's decisions specifically related to landscaping, architecture, and design going directly to the planning commission. And we also have, I believe, copies for any members of the public as well with that new language. That concludes my staff report, and I am happy to answer any questions.
At this time, we'll entertain questions from the city council before we open the public hearing. Do I have anybody who would like to speak or ask questions?
So we were just handed a piece of paper just now. Is this something that was changed from what was in the original agenda packet?
It was. It was changed with modifications specifically to what I just said about appeals of director decisions going to the planning commission specifically related to landscaping and design and architecture. Thank you.
Okay, so I would, you know, raise the point that something substantive change like this should be properly noticed with 72 hours, and getting something here on the dais as a change right now would tell me that this probably is something that shouldn't go forward tonight, that it should be properly noticed. This is a substantive change. But I don't know, you know, I'm happy to have an opinion the other way on that one. I'm just raising the concern.
I appreciate the concern. I think we'll open, we'll take all the comments, we'll open the public hearing. If there's any major issues during public hearing, maybe we can help make that decision. Go ahead.
My only comment is I think the verbiage is going to be very, very important in this ordinance. I don't mind maybe moving this to another meeting. That way, we make sure that everything is in there, that we have, we cross our Ts and dot our Is. I don't mind postponing if we need to, but I can go either way.
Mr. Carter?
I would just add, I don't see any issue with this because it's much, it would be similar as if one of us offered an amendment during the council debate and deliberation. This is a minor, very obvious change. We were to make that from the dais, we wouldn't postpone the meeting. We'd just either accept the amendment and vote on it as a total or move on. I don't see this as a very drastic change, so I'm fine with moving ahead with it.
I also read it when it was sent to us earlier this afternoon. I don't think it was major changes. I mean, I can go either way on this. After the, if we were to approve it tonight and the first reading happened, they would have to come back to council again for a second reading.
That's correct.
And during the second reading, we could still change things if we wanted to during the second reading. So if we did have a lot of, all of a sudden there was opposition to it, we could change some language during the second reading, and I wouldn't mind entertaining if we did move this forward, entertaining the idea of bringing the second reading out into, and it would be an administrative item at that point. It wouldn't be a public hearing again, right? Rather than keeping it, I'd rather keep it off the consent calendar and put it on to the administrative calendar for the second reading, so that if there was any opposition to the verbiage that was added, we could make the corrections at that point, unless the council truly wants to just wait and hold it over till the next meeting. Is there any, is there any time sensitive, is it time sensitive from the planning commissions or, I'm sorry, from our staff's perspective?
If there were another appeal that would come, you know, in a similar situation to what we encountered recently, but other than that, I don't, I don't know if we have an appeal pending at the moment or anything like that.
Okay. With that said, what I'll do is open the public hearing unless there's any more questions for staff.
Just one question, nothing about the agenda, but I have a text from my wife saying that the Zoom is not working, the meeting. It's not showing up on Zoom.
My wife gave up tonight, so. Because usually my wife's doing the same thing. Why can't I see you at that meeting?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion? I think in light of what's happened tonight, that it might be a good idea to maybe continue the meeting.
Continue the full meeting or can, let me do this. Let me open the public hearing. Let me take any public testimony, and we'll continue this item for sure. And then there's two items I'd like to get through tonight, and the rest of them we can.
I would think that we would just, all right, never mind.
There's just two quick items I think are pretty much easy to get through. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Are we back on Zoom? Okay, thank you. I'm open to public hearing at this time. Is there any public testimony?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I do have one in the audience, Mr. Chairman. Can you, can you open the mic because I'll get yelled at by Roger's wife, my wife.
And identify yourself, please.
You got it. My name is Robert Griffith. I am chair of the planning commission. I am happy to see this before council tonight, but I want to know, if you're going to continue this, I would wait until the next meeting to do my testimony, if that's okay? Or would you prefer it tonight?
Yeah, I have to open the public hearing by law. I don't, I'm going to, I'm going to table this item till the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other public testimony online or in the room? With that said, I think it's the consensus of council to table this item to the next available meeting, which will be September, no, 14th is the next week, the week after that, 21st?
Continue or table?
We would continue because it's no, it's a public hearing, correct, Jerome? Yes, we will continue to the 21st. Public hearing will remain open. Item four is the.
Do we need a motion to continue, Mr. Mayor?
Do you need a motion on that?
I think we need a motion to continue.
Yes, we can take a motion.
Sorry, my brain's kind of shot right now. Thank you for reminding me. Is there a motion to continue to the 21st?
Motion to continue to September 21st?
21st.
Why is that a familiar date? Oh, that's my birthday. Motion to continue September 21st.
Second it. There's a motion, if you move it on the screen. And you second it, it comes up. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Administrative calendar, First Amendment to Building Department Plan Check Professional Services Agreement with Scott Fizikas. Someone help me with this one. I don't know why I couldn't say that. Fizikas and Associates, Ms. Walms.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Going to actually start by introducing you all to our new building official, Eric Becerra, who will actually be giving the staff report for tonight's item.
Good evening, Mayor and respected council. What we have today is an agenda item that is an amendment to an existing agreement that we have with one of our consultants that does plan check, a couple other things for us here at the building department. And what we have here is a recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute this amendment for a professional services agreement between the city and Scott Fizikas and Associates, most of us known as SFA, for the building and safety plan check services on an as-needed and as-directed basis with approval as to form by the city attorney. A little bit of background, what we have is a current agreement with several consultants that complete building and safety plan check services for the building plans that are submitted by private developers. So we have currently Willdan, IntraWest, and SFA or Scott Fizikas and Associates. And these current consultants, what they do is they help expedite a lot of these projects that we have. Because we're a small team, we need these consultants to help push these items. What we've done is created an agreement where we have a streamlined process where we require them to have a turnaround time, first round of plan checks within 10 days. This helps us provide a customer service that pretty much no other city is able to compete with. And on the second round, we give a maximum of five days to turn around a second review. So after the applicant has reviewed their comments or corrections and comes back and resubmits, we give that consultant five days to fix those comments and concerns on the plans and get them back to the customer or the applicant. SFA has been the consultant that we've gone to for a lot of these larger projects. Luckily, they've been able to withhold that, that five-day and 10-day turnaround time, which has been really good. What we've also realized is, over the last couple of years, we have run out of funds because we weren't anticipating this amount of construction to occur. So with that, what we've done is we've gone out and kind of looked at what we are expecting to incur and run into in the next couple of years. And in order to just kind of get this out there so it's on the budget, we've adjusted some, some of the terms that we originally had. So the financial impact that this would have is the expenses for this agreement, they're funded entirely by plan check services. So what that means is when the applicant comes in and they pay for the permitting process, the entire scope of that is divided between us, the city of Desert Hot Springs, and the consultant that we hire for that project. Seventy-five percent of that going to the consultant, 25 staying in-house. This allows for the staff to cover some of the costs that are incurred as far as actual administrative costs, and this allows the consultant to get that five-day and 10-day turnaround time. So the agreement that's being amended is for amount to not exceed $500,000 annually, plus a contingent amount of $200,000 annually, for a total annual budget amount of $700,000 per year for a period of three years. The annual balances on the agreement are as follows. Original term is January 16th, 2019 to January 30th, 2023, of $500,000. The First Amendment being fiscal year 2021 to '22, $700,000. Fiscal year 2022 to '23, $700,000. And fiscal year 2023 and 2024, $700,000. So we will need this to be amended. We do have Exhibits One and Two that go into more details of that agreement. So what we're asking is that you take a look and you see the amendment and to authorize that the additional spending is authorized. This increase will include fiscal year 2021, 2022 mid-year budget adjustments, and the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 proposed budget adjustments. The fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget will have sufficient appropriations for this agreement. Expenses are charged to Building and Safety Division Contract Services and the General Fund, account number 00141614320. Thank you.
Thank you for the staff report. Eric, do we have public comments right now on this item?
No, we do not.
I have one question before we get to council members. I have a question. You're asking for $500,000, but you're asking for a $200,000 contingent. Forty percent is a little high for contingency. Is there a reason why?
Yes, we do anticipate some significant projects that are coming in, which is why we're asking for this amount. If these projects are approved to continue and develop, the significant amount of that funding will be taken up by just a few projects. So what we're hoping for is that we get this agreement done, and the $500,000 with the $200,000 contingent allows us to have that flexibility. Like we said, the 100% of the costs incurred are paid for by the applicants themselves. So there is really no necessarily financial impact, it's just the, the numbers need to be accounted for, for those fiscal years.
Okay, so in good practice, it's usually not more than 20%, Jeffrey, on contingencies?
Good practice, it actually kind of ranges, you go 5 to 15 to 20% depending on, depending on the service level. So because we are assuming a large amount of, a large increase in planning check fees or planning check services, or want to do a higher level of contingency because of some.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, well, my finance director, Eric, he's good with it, you're, I'm good with it. I would consider maybe, is there any reason why we don't write the contract for $600,000 and do $100,000 contingency?
Currently, what we're hoping for is that the $500,000 is able to get, cover that each fiscal year. So, but we do want to have that, that kind of flexibility in case we do, we get, we do get to that point. We are hopeful that the $500,000, well, to be honest, it'd be nice to hit the $700,000 because that would mean that that's how much development we're having, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, the idea is that we, we will work with that $500,000 as best as possible. And the reason why we've gone to specifically SFA, they've been able to be very reliable as far as very large and complicated projects. They're able to give us the technical amount of support that we need. You know, they, he, he and the firm take a large responsibility on when they, when they take these large projects on, and so it's good to have a firm versus a small group or smaller, small consultant take on these projects.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. I don't think there's a lot of risk here. I just want, just that we protect when we do our contracts. We usually stay within that 10 to 20% range at the most, but I get what you're saying on this one. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, welcome, Mr. Becerra. I hope you are enjoying settling into your new job. I am happy, I guess, that, that we have a problem that many cities wish they had, which is a lot of plan checks. It shows we've got a lot of development and a lot of growth, and it means that the business is booming here in the city. That quick turnaround, I think, is very key. I've looked at a lot of other cities. Nobody has that kind of a turnaround, and that's, that's, that's a great incentive for developers to come to Desert Hot Springs because we are so customer-focused and so responsive to that. And I've heard feedback from builders association stuff that they really appreciate that stuff. The way I understand going to the higher amount, to the $700,000, is to keep it from having to come back to us if we hit that cap. And the way, the way it's structured, if, if we hit the cap of $500,000, then they've got to come back to us for approval to go beyond that. So I like the fact that we do have a fairly big cushion here above and beyond what our normal contingency cushion is to keep them from having to bring back routine things like that to us. And like I said, I think, I think it shows the growth and the positive reasons for coming out to Desert Hot Springs is where we, that we have to do things like this. So I'm supportive of this, and I'd like to see us move forward with it.
Go ahead if you like.
Your plies take longer than I do.
Sorry. So plan check in 10 days, second round in five days. What's the turnaround for the third, fourth, and fifth plan check?
So, so what we have is obviously each project being its own individual, case-by-case basis. What we do have is every subsequent plan check. So that would be if the applicant goes through and revises everything, then they should get the subsequent turnaround time being the, the five days.
Okay. That's good, the five days. So I got a concern, it's always coming up, is new and different corrections on the plans. And there was some talk up here in the council trying to decide if they get one shot at the apple or two. I've always thought, you know, this complicated as the California building code is, that the people doing the plan checks should get two shots. But at the third, after they send back the second one, and you send it in with the, the look at it, and they come back and say, oh, you know what? We found some more stuff on here. You need to do some more corrections. There was talk up here that, that the city would not, that the developer would not pay for that. So I want, you know, 10 days, five days, and unless somebody has messed up on their drawings when they sent it back in and didn't get the second correction right, but to go find, and I, you know, I've got friends that are in this industry, I'm, it's like talk and shop with them, you know, when you go out to dinner and stuff. And, you know, they say, hey, they just sent me new and different corrections that they never picked up on the first round, and as they explained it, one plan checker looks at it, and then when it goes back the second time, somebody else looks at it. And then in these big firms, it's not the same person looking at it all the time. So I'm just raising the concern here now to make sure that we don't have that going on, and welcome, Mr. Becerra. And so I'm just expressing that to you now as a new member of our team that I hope we're watching for that. The other thing is, is that when we approved all this a while back, there was the ability where, what we used to do is have the plans submitted by the, at the developer to us, then we'd send them off to the plan checker with a bonded courier, and then they'd come back to us with another bonded courier, and then they'd go back to the developer, and everything was like, you know, everything had to come to City Hall first. Have we corrected that now? Because when we, when we build this, when we went out this contract, we were told they have the capability to interact with the applicant and actually have the AutoCAD open and make the changes, and that we don't need to see every change as long as it's coming back to us, right? Are we on that system now?
So we are, in fact, on that system with Scott Fizikas and Associates. And in addition to that, we are piloting a digital plan check process with several of our projects right now. So all of our developers will have many streamlined options to submit their projects and talk with SFA directly on corrections.
Okay, so, and they work them out right then, they get them down, not have to go through all this expense, I mean, I like reprographics, but, you know, it's a lot of money to copy a set of plans. So, okay, and then the, Mr. Mayor, I think you hit the nail on the head, identifying 40% contingency is too much. I don't think in any board or commission where I serve, you know, Sunline, that the standard is 5%, I think. I don't think I've seen, maybe seen one at 10%. And I understand a little bit of the nature, but I'd be more comfortable just approving the original budget with a 10% contingency, and then just come on back to us, let us know the good news that you've exhausted that budget, and that would be my preference. So if I was going to make a motion, that's what I would do, but it's not my turn to make that motion yet. Mr. Nunez?
Thank you. First of all, welcome, Mr. Becerra. Looking forward to see you in action. You did a good job with the staff report. Really do appreciate it. Would this also depend on the size of the project? Of course, if you have a bigger project, it takes more time, more money, more effort, right, than, than a smaller project?
Yeah, so, so the amount that you're seeing, it's, it's the cost that it takes for the applicant to go in and pay for the application process. So when they, when an applicant comes in and wants to develop a new project, what ends up occurring is they come in and they apply for a permit, and they pay for the plan check fee. And the plan check fee, as well as the building permit process, is obviously costly. So depending on the size of the project, it depends on the financial impact that that has. Obviously, that the entire, the entire amount that is being asked for to be adjusted is accounted for. And you kind of, you kind of answered it right there, is we do anticipate several large projects that will eat up a good amount of this. So instead of coming back, we would like to address it right away. We obviously do have other, other consultants as well that we work with. This is just an amendment to that existing contract that we have with Scott Fizikas and Associates, as well as the other, the other two consultants.
I think it's very important that we, when we bring these consultants in, that they're meeting our needs and meeting our demands. I would feel comfortable that we evaluate this yearly and see where we're at on things. If we haven't hit the threshold, then, okay, we can look at it and bring it back and see what we can do with the cost. we can look at it and bring it back and see what we can do with the cost. My main thing is like, I really like to see local consultants locally here in the valley that know, know the valley, that know the cities individually. And also how this affects, you know, we have a developer in, in plan check for eight years, for eight, for eight days, it comes back and it's, it's a simple lighting issue or parking issue. Does that mean that they have to do, again, going back to what Doria said, I just don't want this to affect another nine days just for a simple change where we can see staff ourselves do that. So if we can have language in there to, to make sure that doesn't happen, I'd be more happy to, to move this forward or even doing a 10% like as Russell Betts.
If I may, Councilmember Nunez. So for Scott Physikas and Associates, this agreement really encompasses the full plan check process for larger projects, but completely understand what you're saying with respect to those smaller over-the-counter reviews. And that's one of the benefits that we have with having Eric here. So Eric is a certified plans examiner. And so for some of those lingering items, I'll call them, that generally tend to kind of hang around at the last tail end of a plan check, that's where Eric's expertise and skill set will be able to be put to good use. So we won't have to send them all the way back out just for a routine, you know, something that he can do over the counter.
So we're going to keep him busy?
We're keeping him very busy. He jumped in. He's all the way up to his head at this point.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
There's nothing else from the dais. I would just ask the council, let's, let's talk about approving this contract. I think with the fact that we're not, it's not really a risk on our parts. It's going to be paid for by the developers. I think a 20% is the highest that I'm willing to go on a contingency. So I would give you 500,000 plus 100,000 contingent. Did my mouth right there, Jeffrey? Okay, phew. You didn't have your hat on. I didn't have mine.
That's a motion I'll second.
And if you need that 100,000, just bring it back to council. And that's my motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number five is a designation, designation of voting delegates and alternates for the 2021 League of Cities Annual Conference in Sacramento, California. I was told today that there was only two council members that were attending, which is Ms. Pie and Mr. Nunez. Mr. Nunez, do you feel comfortable being the voting delegate for the city of Desert Hot Springs?
Better watch out. Yeah. No, I, you know, I don't, this will be my first time going, so I don't know what it's going to entail.
There's about 600 people voting. Just follow the pack or not.
I have a problem doing that.
What we'll do is have staff reach out to Erin Sassy, who is our representative for Riverside County, and have her give you kind of an overview of what the delegate would do. It should really just make it a couple of votes for the city, but she'll let you know if there's any controversial items that you might want to abstain from or something like that.
Very well.
And then we will appoint Jan Pie as the alternative, just in case she's able to get better overnight and still attend the conference. No one else is attending, correct? Mr. Betts, you're not attending?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So if you're okay with that, we're just, yeah, a motion by Mr. Betts.
Gary, you going to second? Oh, I don't have, I don't have the motion on my screen. For some reason, I did something wrong.
Here, I'll, I'll second.
That's good. That works.
And then, if you don't worry, do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
And then this is just a discussion item to see if the council wants to move this forward. This is a proposed ordinance regarding fines for illegal dumping. Mr. Gardner, can you do just a quick overview of it? And then see if this council wants to move this forward for?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gerald, can you bring up those slides real quick while I start off on this? You know, it's no secret that illegal dumping has been a problem here in the city. It's the number one complaint I get. I think it's probably the number one complaint most of us get on council. And it just seems to be getting worse. You know, throw up another one there, Gerald. It's never-ending game of whack-a-mole, in a way. And I'm confident that we've done everything we can as a city to make it easier for people to get trash and bulky items picked up. It seems that no matter what we do, it continues, though. And frankly, you know, I'm at a loss to figure out how to fix it. We've tried everything. And I just don't understand the kind of people that think it's okay to just, as these pictures show, just go dump all your junk out in the desert. And we're all tired of it here on the council and, and our residents. So maybe, just maybe, a giant stick will help. And I've bounced this idea around with the mayor and other council members. And I'm going to, you know, I've had residents suggest, oh, let's put up some signs. Well, as you can see from that slide there, the sign just doesn't do anything. Let's, you know, no dumping? Oh, that means dump here. I don't get it. But, so what I'm envisioning is, is a large, hefty $10,000 or so fine if you're caught dumping in the desert. It just, it just might deter a few folks. We've noticed a big uptick in dumping around the 1st of August, likely from renters moving out. And I expect that now that the COVID eviction moratorium has expired, we're going to see quite a bit more of that. And I think we need to be prepared. So like I said, the mayor and I have been noodling around this idea. And I'm hoping my fellow council members will support moving forward with developing an ordinance to slap some heavy fines on people who dump in the desert. And at a minimum, I think we need to institute a large fine and put up some rather large warning signs, even a billboard, like the old Mothers Against Drunk Driving ones, cautioning people against dumping. Just maybe, just maybe, might deter a few more folks. But, you know, it's almost a last-ditch effort, I'm afraid.
As a co-sponsor of this item to put on the agenda for discussion, to see if we want to develop this ordinance, you saw the sign there from the Bureau of Land Management. It's a $100,000 fine if you're caught, but it's so hard to catch because public safety just, you know, they're spread so thin most of the time. So this is just another tool in our toolbox. Mr. Betts and I have been working with a cleanup committee. Mr. Nunez, I know came to council recently with a complaint from a resident of an area not far from his home. Mr. Gardner walks every day. I know Ms. Pie's brought it up. It is probably, as Mr. Gardner said, one of the top things. But anything we can do to make it more uncomfortable for people and second thoughts, maybe one or two of them will stop. I think it's an opportunity. So this is not an item for discussion today. This is an item for our policy to bring to the council if they want us to develop this ordinance. Mr. Gardner and I would work as a committee and bring that back to another meeting later.
I'd like to offer first, I recognize this.
Yes.
Certainly, this is a welcome move. I'd like to ask that when you consider this, that you, there's a couple of things that happen. When people see a trash pile, somebody goes and picks around in their seats, finds somebody's name, and assume that that's the person that dumped it there. And I know on a few instances, it's been a landlord's cleaning crew has gone in there, took the stuff, and instead of taking it to the dump like they're supposed to, somebody's personal effects are dumped out there and the wrong person's getting blamed. I'd like to see something come back, if you're going to bring this back, where, you know, if you're getting rid of hazardous chemicals, you've got cradle-to-grave responsibility. I don't know if we could put that kind of level on landlords, but something to where they must register the people who are hauling the stuff away, something like that. And then the other thing would be, you know, as we saw with that sign, $100,000 fine, and it still didn't do any good, maybe bring back a proposal for the council to consider some sort of funding for a, you know, outside of our police department, and bog them down, that maybe some other way to, you know, private security, just to try and monitor and see what would happen. I would like to see that come back as a part of the proposal. Otherwise, I think it's a great idea. And I think, go, go, go. Bring that one back to us.
Any comments, Mr. Nunez?
No, sir.
All right. Do you have a motion to bring this item back, what they proposed ordinance? And I'll second it. Is there any public comments? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
We've tabled item seven. We'll go to consent calendars. One item pulled.
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
Yes.
I don't believe we've tabled item seven.
Do I have the authority to table under Rosenberg's Rules of Order? Or do I have to get a motion to table item?
So if a motion to table is obviously for a date uncertain, just sometime in the future, a motion to continue obviously is to, you know, a date certain. It does require a motion, though.
Okay. I would like to table this item to another date uncertain because I'm not sure which, when Ms. Pie will be available again. So I don't want to put this on. Actually, we could put it on the next agenda if we wanted to. I'll make that motion to table this item to September, or continue this item to September 21st. I'm waiting for it to come up on the screen. Sorry. Give me a minute. So Rosenberg's Rules of Orders and Robert's Rules of Order are a little different in certain areas. So just want to make sure we're following them. Any comments, questions?
I'm just, I don't see the need to continue. As, you know, we've gone this far with the meeting. I don't see why we would continue it.
Please vote.
Motion fails on a tie vote. With Councilmember Gardner, Mayor Mattis voting in favor, and Mayor Protem Betts, and Councilmember Nunez opposed.
Thank you very much. We moved to item number nine, which is the payment register and city council expenditures report for the month of May 2021.
What happened to item seven?
He just announced that it failed.
The motion to continue failed, which means we take it up.
All right. Thank you for keeping me straight again. I might as well. So you'd like to hear that item tonight, even though we've requested, because of a medical emergency, not to hear that item tonight?
We covered everything else.
So do you want to utilize politics in your?
Nothing about politics.
Okay. Well, I'm just making the announcement now that the, it was a medical emergency by a council member, Jan Pie. She requested that any items that she helped bring to this would be postponed. And I made that announcement at the beginning. You agreed to it in the back, and now you're saying you're not. So you want to hear this item?
I did not participate in any serial meeting in the back of the room. I'm going to make the record clear on that. We can't decide that back there. And
There wasn't a serial meeting for everybody. Just want to let everybody know that I announced to city council that Ms. Pie would be leaving, and I'd like to table or continue item seven because it was one of the items that I felt that I needed the full council to make a decision on. Each of the council members agreed to it in the back.
I would second that. I think Ms. Pie, this is an important item for her. She obviously has a medical issue. I think it's only fair, regardless of where we come down on this issue, to allow her to make her statements, which she cannot do tonight. So I think it's fair that we postpone this for her sake, and nobody else's.
Well, this one says, put on the agenda, the prior one says, put on the agenda by Mayor Mattis and Councilmember Gardner. And this one was put on by Mayor Mattis. And I don't see Councilwoman Pie's name here. But I think we had a vote on whether or not to continue it, and the motion failed.
So we'll explain that, since you want to bring it forward. There was a item in closed session that was discussed. This item was a backup to that item. Because of discussion in closed session, a majority of the city council decided to hear this item in open session. The person, one of the three that agreed to that, one abstained, one did not agree with it, three did. The one person did agree, had a medical emergency tonight and left. As again, I felt fair not to hear the item without that person here because I was one of the people that said we should hear the item. So that's the reasoning behind that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, then, would make a point that the item is on the agenda. It's been placed there on this agenda for discussion tonight. There was a motion to continue. That failed. And so I suggest we get on with the agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn. That motion takes priority. And if it passes, we adjourn.
It doesn't need a supermajority. There's a motion to adjourn the meeting at this time. I'll second that. Wait, all right. Can you bring it up?
If I could do a real call vote?
Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Betts?
No.
Mayor Mattis?
Aye.
And Councilmember Nunez?
No.
Motion fails.
So what's protocol, Ms. City Attorney?
So at this point, we have a failed motion. We have an item on the agenda. It's obviously not, doesn't appear that it's moving forward. You know, we have a complete stalemate. The other motion that I did not hear, maybe we could take this one, is a motion to table the item to a date uncertain because we have a motion to continue, and then we have a motion to adjourn. Both motions failed. So that's the third option. And then if there's nothing, I would ask for 10-minute breaks, and I could actually go back and look.
Isn't there a third option to just continue with the agenda item?
Why are you going to continue with the agenda item that already has a stalemate to begin with?
Right.
Doesn't mean we don't hear the item. The discussion is whether or not we continue this item, and that's failed now on two votes, two attempts to keep this item off the agenda. It's failed on two votes. It's going to probably, I can't speak for another council member, but I know that this one is on the agenda, and we need to have it out. We need to go ahead and discuss this.
So in that case, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we obviously are complete, frankly, I see it as a stalemate at this point. If you'd like, we could take a 10-minute recess, and I could go ahead and check out and look to see exactly what happens. I've never been in a, in a situation similar. And I will go back and look at Robert's Rules of Order specifically because we do have an agenda, an item on the agenda. However, we're at a stalemate as to whether or not we would like to take that item up.
Point of order, where do you see that we're at a stalemate? Are you predicting what the final vote will be after discussion?
No. What I'm saying is that we, the motion fails, right? So we had, we had two failed motions. If, if council sees another motion to be made, then so be it.
There was two failed motions to continue the item or table the item, and both of those failed. So the only other option is to go ahead with the item.
That's not true at all.
There could be another motion.
Okay, hold on, hold on. I'm going to, I'm going to run the meeting. So first of all, the first item was to continue the item to the next meeting, which failed. The second motion was to adjourn the meeting in whole, and that failed. So there wasn't two items failed on this issue. What we're going to do is we're going to skip over, and I do have some authority here. We're going to skip over and go to item number nine, which is the payment registers. And we're going to come back to item number seven. Payment registers and city council expenditures report for month of May 2021. You pulled this item?
Yeah, thank you. See, so my understanding is we're on item nine, consent calendar, and the item that I pulled. And the Buzz Factory's on there. And I just happened to go through and notice that they have a retainer of $5,000. They noted, in the registered notes, retainer for $5,000. Is that $5,000 a month?
So yes, that was a retainer of $5,000 a month. We are no longer utilizing the Buzz Factory on retainer. So we have a new PR and marketing firm, but yes, that is correct.
Okay. So they've, we've had them for what, a couple of years now, at $5,000 a month?
Correct.
So $5,000 a month, my math ain't so good, but 5,000 times 12 is 60,000, which exceeds the $50,000 spending limit of the city manager. And I think prior to that, a couple of years ago, it was 25,000 before we upped it to 50. So I'm just making the point here that something like a marketing contract like that, anywhere else, any other agency or board where I sit, that type of thing comes back to the council for review. Do you want to go with this person or not? I don't know how Buzz Factory got on. I don't have anything against them or for them. But when we put out a contract that exceeds a certain amount, it needs to come to this council for approval. And I would think anytime we go with a new marketing firm, if that's what we're going to do, that the proposals would go out for bid and come back to us if the amount exceeds the spending authority of the city manager. So if we have a new firm that we're going to switch to, then I'm hoping to see that on the agenda for approval, and that we go out to bid, and that we, you know, we just aren't handing out contracts that exceed spending authority without council approval. So, thank you. I got my answer to my question.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, this item is received and filed.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we're back to item number seven at this time. The way the rules work here is that this item will be heard, even though we've made a plea that the council member is not able to attend for a medical emergency. Two council members don't think that's important enough to, to listen to, and the request from that individual. So we will hear this item as of now. I actually just use it as a placeholder on here if a decision was made in closed session. And the, the decision to bring forth was the interaction of the planning commission and a specific individual on the planning commission, which is Mr. Meyerhoffen, who was recently appointed by Mr. Betts and ratified by the city council in, I believe, January. The reason that this is taking place today is the fact that we, as a city council, have the responsibility to oversee commissions in the city of Desert Hot Springs, committees, and so forth. When a commissioner does not represent the city of Desert Hot Springs, there has been removals in the past when commissioners have had issues brought forth from other commissioners or council members or even the public, the city council becomes sort of the hearing board of that commission or commissioner. With that said today, there was an item that was brought to the city council in closed session to discuss. It cannot be discussed outside of closed session. be discussed outside of closed session, but it was on behalf of some of the actions made by this commissioner. So the City Council, three members of the City Council agreed to take this to open session for deeper discussion. Any removal, suspension, censure, or nothing done to a commissioner must be done in public setting. So at this time, Mr. Betts, Mr. Meyerhoffen was your appointee. I've heard that you've done the rounds with the council and all the city staff and commissioners, so we'd like to hear your, your side. What did you say? I don't need to repeat myself.
Okay. I didn't hear what you said, so I've had it. Whatever, whatever case you want to make, go for it.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
I'm waiting for your...
I just added the, well, the reason we're here tonight for.
Okay, so motion to deny, were you putting some...
Why are you going straight to a motion? We're in discussion. I haven't even done public comment yet.
Well, I don't know what we're discussing. The agenda item says...
I just announced that the possible removal, suspension, censure, or nothing to Commissioner Meyerhoffen.
Okay, on what, on what grounds, I guess, is what I'm asking. I haven't heard what this is about.
On his actions as a commissioner.
Okay, well, I'm waiting to see what you have to say.
Okay. Anyone else in the council have any questions or comments before I open up public comments?
Just a quick question. This is, there should be a correction. This is not, has to do with Jan Pie's appointee. This has to do with Ted Meyerhoffen. So this is why I continued, I think we should continue to hearing this item. It had nothing to do with Jan Pie's appointee.
And I do want to offer one comment. I did, I didn't abstain from discussion in closed session. I left, and that was on the basis that I didn't, that I saw the conversation was starting to talk about what we're supposed to be getting into here now in open session, and I didn't want to participate in what I viewed as a discussion that was outside the public view, that's supposed to be inside the public view. And to the extent that the conversation was dealing with the threat of litigation, and those things necessarily need to be in closed session, then that's fine, but when it deviates to the merits of, you know, somebody's performance as a planning commissioner, which I saw it going there, that's why I left the meeting, and I'm happy to take up that discussion now, when, as soon as I hear what the problem was. I certainly have watched the meetings, and, and I saw the letter that Commissioner Duffel wrote, but may, maybe the, somebody wants to read the letter, or whatever you want to do. Somebody needs to make the case. You're making the case that you want to remove, or is it up for consideration? Did you want to remove Meyerhoffen? Commissioner Meyerhoffen, is that what you're, is that, but I'm trying to figure out what the point of this meeting is.
I've tried explaining multiple times. I don't know. I'll try again. So in closed session, there was a letter written to the City Council based on allegations that are not, I don't think, public information as of right now. I believe there's still a closed session item in threat of litigation that cannot be made forward, but us as a City Council, hearing that item led to this item here, and our discussion on removal, suspension, or censure of a commissioner, or nothing, based on those actions. You did not stay in that closed session because you felt the item was above and beyond, so you don't have the full effect. Four council members stayed in closed session. Three approved this item to be heard tonight. This item was put on there as a placeholder if needed. Three of the four said yes, we will take it out of closed session for discussion as per the law requires, and that's where we're at.
Okay, so I just want to know what it is. You're asking to remove a commissioner, who I think's been doing an excellent job. I just want to know...
What we're asking.
What do you see differently?
Okay. Mr. Gardner?
Couple of things, real quick. One, the closed session item was a discussion of potential litigation. You're correct. In describing the reasons for the potential litigation does not constitute discussions of the, of the actions of whether or not to remove that commissioner or not. It is merely a discussion of the potential of the legal action, and whether or not that legal action will or will not be taken, and we do not know that at this point. That being said, at this time, looking at this agenda right now, this is a discussion item. We don't have to take an action on it right now. We've had a discussion on it. I am very disappointed in my fellow council members, because we had a council member take ill in the middle of a meeting, that this wasn't an item that she wanted to discuss, and I think as a minimum, human compassion and decency, we should allow her to make her case, and she obviously can't, because she is not here. So we don't have to act on this tonight. We've had a discussion. This is a discussion item only. I say we're done with it.
I agree. I don't think there's any more discussion at this time. I don't think, I want to question the commissioner. I don't think I want to take any more action until I can hear all council members' comments at this time. I don't even know if I would have felt comfortable making a decision tonight to begin with.
Okay. I think, Gary, I appreciate your plea. I think it's, as the mayor often says, it's more political than genuine, because I suggested that we adjourn this meeting earlier, but we went on with all these other items, which were of significant importance. This one isn't any more significant than any other one on the agenda, and the decision was made to go ahead. My preference was to adjourn the entire meeting, but we didn't, I didn't get my way. So now we're coming to an item that has political ramifications, and I really resent the suggestion that somebody's being callous here, because we're agreeing to continue with the meeting and an item that's been put on the agenda. And so, but I'm not here in any case for whatever's being suggested. By the way, it does say action. This is an action item. The word action is in the agenda, so it's not just a receive and file. And so I'll make a motion that Ted Meyerhoffen, if it works this way, that any, any suggestion that he be removed, be rejected, and that he remain on the Planning Commissioner.
Before you take the motion, I'm on public comments. Actually, because you made a motion, we need to get a second, so is there a second to that motion? Not a second. There's a motion and a second on that. We're going to go to public comments at this time. I'll take public comments from the audience first, and then from Zoom. Actually, I'll take from Zoom first. I think we have one public comment in Zoom. Is that related to this item?
Yes, it is. Rakita Grant.
Ms. Grant, if you can identify yourself, if you can hear us, once we let you into the room, and you'll have, you'll have three minutes. And she's working on getting you in there. As soon as you, can you hear us, Ms. Grant? Can you hear us now? I see you're on mute. I know sometimes there's a little bit of...
Um, yes.
Yep, there you go. I can hear you now. Okay. Go ahead, identify yourself, and your three minutes will begin.
Hi, my name is Rakita Grant. Hello, staff, mayor, council members, city residents. I just would like to hear what's happening presently, before, I don't know if I have another opportunity to speak, but I'd like to know what's going on with our planning commission. That's the reason why I came tonight, because I saw that we were up, and then I saw the first agenda item. It might have been number three, so I don't know. It's been, I've had, I've had a struggle with my internet. All I could see was like the city seal, so I don't know if the Zoom has been working. I could hear, but I don't really know if it was working. So I'd like to hear what's going on with our commission.
Oh, right now, there's nothing going on except for the fact that we are on item seven, which is the current Planning Commission's appointments. There was a discussion by the City Council. One council member took ill and had to go to the hospital. We asked to continue this item. It failed. Now, Mr. Betts has made a motion to, whatever his motion was, and seconded. I think it's based on no reprimand to Mr. Meyerhoffen, but we never got to that discussion on whether there should or shouldn't be, based on the fact that the other council member's not here. So if you'd like to wrap up in 30 seconds, I'll give you that before I close the public comment.
Well, can I discuss what's going on with our planning commission?
You have 30 seconds to just, I'm sorry, I'll give you a whole minute, because I think we only used about two minutes of your time. You can have one more minute as a public comment period, so please begin.
Okay, well, since I've been on the planning commission, I've seen some cause for concern, and I would like to discuss that. Perhaps we could have had a study session clearly for the item that you guys first had on the agenda in regards to the directors and how the appeal process would work. But there are several issues and violations that I've seen, that I think that if I had more of an opportunity to run down through you, I have a complete list that might be helpful. And I don't know how this will impact myself as a commissioner, but I do care about the city, and I think that it's important to discuss these things in the public.
Appreciate your comments, and we'll move to anybody else on Zoom for public comments?
No, I did not.
All right. Do I have any public comments in the audience?
Yes, we have one, Mr. Ted Meyerhoffen.
Mr. Meyerhoffen? I'm not sure. Is it red?
Yeah, it's red now.
There it is.
Mayor Mattis and council, I don't understand what's going on here. Nobody sent me a letter, nobody's from city staff. I come here to this meeting tonight, somebody in the audience tells me that a commissioner is suing me. I haven't, no knowledge of that. What am I being accused of? How come I, you're all sitting here talking about getting, removing me from the commission, and I've done nothing wrong? As a Marine, I played a small part in American freedom, and that small part is gone. Where, what are we doing? I don't understand this. As a Marine, I've always been taught to do things according to the book, and that's what I've done as a planning commissioner, to the book. I've, the question that we do, the meetings according to Roberts' Rules of Order, which isn't happening. If it's easy for, I don't want to write letters about other commissioners and the mistakes they're making on the commission, because they're not following Roberts' Rules of Order, or they're going around making comments like I'm going to be sued. What about defamation of character? What are you folks accusing me of? I don't understand it. What have I done wrong to bring this forth, for my name to come out in a public meeting where everybody in the city can hear it, when I've done nothing wrong? Please tell me here what I've done wrong in these meetings. Tell me what meeting I did it wrong, and explain it to me. The only thing I've done is voted yes or no on items that I believe should be voted yes or no on. Some of those items were what the City Council or the city staff has brought forth as an agenda item, and I didn't agree with it. I understand it's that the City Council has an ordinance that you can dismiss any commissioner for whatever reason, but that puts in the back of a commissioner's mind, what if I vote no on something that the city brings or another applicant brings? Will I be removed from the commission? And apparently, that's true, because I've done nothing wrong. But yet, here we are, Mayor Mattis, with you wanting me off the, or discussing me being removed from the commission. What have I done wrong? That's what I would really like to know tonight. Why, what is this other commissioner accusing me of? Why, if there's a letter, why haven't I seen it? And why hasn't this other commissioner's name been brought up in the public comm, by, by the commission tonight? Only my name's being brought up. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Anyone else? Please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It, I think it's very difficult for anyone to really understand what's going on. I understand that a letter was written. It was discussed in closed session. I am aware of the individual, and I will say that his name was mentioned by Mayor Pro Tembets, reported an incident to me one time, that something occurred between him and Mr. Meyerhoffen. I will say, anything else that's been written, I am not aware of. However, I do have full faith in the individual that wrote that letter, because I've worked with him for over three years. I don't believe he would write something that was false. I personally feel that something of this magnitude, since it appears to be something that is great, since it was in closed session, and you can't discuss it in public, should have the full council in order to make any motions or move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak to this item, or do we have any public comment cards? All right, we'll close public comments right now. I'm going to make my comments, first of all, to go around the council, and we'll go from there. Mr. Meyerhoffen, I wasn't prepared at this time to get into the details of why your name is being brought up, because of the fact that we don't have a full council. I did stand in that back room, and I notified each council member that she was leaving via ambulance to the hospital, and that I thought this item needed to have a full council for a decision. That's why you have odd members of the council, not a full, not even members of the council. So right now, we're in a situation where I don't think the proper decisions could be made, and I don't know if I would have made the decision tonight with your name being brought forward. I will say this, Mr. Meyerhoffen, you represent the city desert hot springs. You represent the city desert hot springs as a planning commissioner. You say, and you stand up there and say you've done nothing wrong. On the contrary, with what I've seen over the last six months, I do feel you've done a few things wrong, and I'd be happy to sit down and talk man to man, and in my office, your office, wherever you call, and tell you what I've seen. I'd be happy to do that. But that wasn't the reason for this item completely tonight. This item was brought forth based on a complaint made against you. I don't know who told you you were being sued. Again, it's conspiracy and talk among people that probably don't know, and so I, at this point, have no idea what you're talking about. To come up here and say you've done nothing wrong, it's, it's fine, but I also have my opinion as mayor of the city desert hot springs, and what you represent when it comes to the full gamut of what the city needs to accomplish. I know there's other council members up here that don't feel the same way I do. I've had many conversations with you over the years. I have no problem having another conversation with you, but there's our certain reasons we are here today. A decision cannot be made tonight, most likely, based on the information that's here today. It might not have been made with, even with a full council, but it's our responsibility as a council to make sure that our commissions and our commissioners represent the best interest of desert hot springs. There was another comment made tonight about a study session. I mentioned it when I came to your commission to speak as the mayor, that I respect that decision to be made. What I've tried to do is follow some leadership rules and training. Is there a phone call coming in? I've tried to follow some leadership training that I've received, where it's usually you give the new, the new people on, in a company, or a commission, or a committee, about six months to kind of fill each other out, and see if they can work together, and then you can call a bigger meeting with everybody, and that's what I, I stated to you at a meeting that I think you showed up late to, and you might not have heard, so maybe, maybe you are right, maybe you didn't hear this, or whoever, whomever it was that brought that up. But a study session with the City Council and the Planning Commission is something that I told you I would have after, after our summer break. So it was something I was getting ready to schedule. Maybe there is some direction you need from the City Council, but what I don't understand is, is why we can't be professional at, at the commission level. That's what I truly don't understand. And we are not running under the Roberts' Rules of Order, we're running under Rosenberg's Rules of Order. So please, when we make that comment, is that correct? Am I correct? Because I've asked this question multiple times. I keep getting heads shaken, and I keep getting two different answers, not from our staff, but, by commissioners and council members. So we'll do better. We'll try to do better, but I just don't understand the issues on the planning commission. I really don't. There's a lot of, I've watched six months worth of meetings. I've watched some very hostile behavior in comments that worry me. Truly does. Truly worries me. But I'm not fit, I'm not ready to make a decision tonight. I'm not ready to make a decision without a full council, and if it comes down to a motion, it really, at this point, wherever it ends up, we'll just, we'll go from there, whatever it is. So with that said, Mr. Nunez, you have anything? The mic's not going.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for, for having, making your comments. I appreciate it. I think it's, it's really early in the game to, to start making decisions as far as removal, suspensions. I don't think we're there yet. I think, you know, like I said, if we haven't furnished all the tools to, to our people to make the right decisions, then we failed. So again, we should have started off with the Planning Commission. I've said this plenty of times, just to see that, make sure that the Planning Commission and the City Council are on the same page. I think that would have helped a lot to see where everybody knows their strengths and weaknesses, and then we can build on it. So again, I wanted this item to continue only because of the fact that it had nothing to do with, with the appointee of Jan Pie, and making a decision tonight should, should be done. I, to me, this shouldn't even be an agenda item. This is something, there's no litigation that's going to be taken forward, so let's, let's vote, man.
Mr. Gardner, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, if you really did want to continue this item, we had that option, and you voted not to continue it. You wanted to hear it tonight. So, that being said, I'm speaking, Mr. Betts. If you had the opportunity to continue it, you voted no on that, so you're forcing us to have this hearing tonight. I agree with you, and I agree with the mayor. We don't have the proper information to make any kind of a decision tonight, which is why we wanted to postpone it. I think it's only fair to Councilmember Pie, and I think it's only fair to this council, that we continue this item so that we can have a proper discussion on it, which is what I had proposed, which again, was voted down. So with that being said, we, we need to move forward on this at some point tonight. So, with that being said, we need to move forward on this at some point tonight, and I do think the issue warrants a full hearing. You can't say that we're not going to be sued. We don't know if we're going to be sued. We don't know if that is going to come forth or not. As a council, it is incumbent upon us and our city attorney that if we are notified of a potential lawsuit, if it's somebody trips over a banana peel outside on the Cabot Yerkes statue tonight, and they say we're going to sue, she has to bring it to us, so that we're aware of that, and we know that. We have a council member, or a commission member, excuse me, who has threatened possible litigation, she had to bring it to us. Therefore, we're having a discussion of what to do about that. Again, it was something that was important to council member Pi, she wanted to bring it forth for a discussion tonight, she's now sitting at Desert Regional Hospital, we're not allowed to have her input, I think her input on this would be exceedingly valuable. Again, we can continue this, move it forward down to either a date certain or a date uncertain. I'm fine with either of those options, but we're having this discussion now because we're at a split council right now. So, I'm ready to move forward with this, I'm fine with continuing it down the road.
I think the reference to continue from my fellow council member, and he, correct me if I'm wrong, was that we continue with the agenda item, not that we continue it. Continuing it, you're looking at continuing, as a continuance, as a term of art under Robert's Rules of Order, that would, and I don't think that's what he was calling for. He said he wanted to continue with the discussion, to go ahead and bring out whatever was on somebody's mind.
The motion was, whether or not, to move forward.
Mr. Gardner, I believe it's my time.
You could have voted to not move forward.
Mr. Mayor, could I have my time, please?
You can, you've interrupted a lot of people, so I gave you a lead on that one.
Here's what I don't do, is I don't interrupt people. I sit here and wait to see when it's my time.
Oh, that wasn't a joke? I'm sorry, I thought you were joking.
Okay, so we're degenerating here. So I'm going to make my points. First off, Rosenberg's Rules of Order is not wholly different than Robert's Rules of Order. Rosenberg says in his seminar, if you go take the time to view it, that everything here in Rosenberg's Order, Rules of Order, is pretty much what Robert's Rules of Order is, with a couple of exceptions, and mostly, and he goes to great length to say that this is the difference, is that when a motion is made under Robert's Rules of Order, and once the motion is made and seconded it, nobody can come back to and the maker of the motion and say, would you like to change it? The motion is the domain of the body, and can't be changed by anybody, the only way it can be dispensed with is to vote no. And that's gotten cumbersome, because people have a discussion and go through their items, so Rosenberg said, let's make that easy, the common practice is to ask the maker of the motion and the second if they want to change it. So, anyhow, I took Rosenberg's seminar, it's like 45 minutes, and it's online, you can go read, go look that up. Anyhow, so, in all intents and purposes, I think it's nitpicking to picket somebody just because they come up here and reference Robert's Rules of Order rather than Rosenberg's Rules of Order, as Mr. Meyerhoffen did when he stood up here. Now, more to the point, I think Ted Meyerhoffen is doing an excellent job on the planning commission, the job that I would want any planning commissioner to do up there, and we just had a display with, you know, for, I interrupted you, you interrupted me, and if you want to watch the planning commission and see what's going on, my goodness, it's a free-for-all out there. I sit there just screaming at my screen, and with people who are doing the watching sessions, these commission meetings, which we do when we're in council, we get bored and we watch planning commission meetings, just screaming, going, everybody is just blurting out. There's a section during the, on the agenda, that says, "Commission Member's Comments", and when somebody's making a comment, all of a sudden, I got staff blurting out into it. It doesn't say staff comments, when I'm at Sunline, or any other board or commission where I sit, and it's all the commissioners' comments, you go down the line, and each commissioner gets their comments, and if staff has something to say about it, they got a yellow pad of paper and a pencil, and they, when it's their turn to speak, they speak. And anytime somebody wants to speak, they're supposed to say, "Mr. Mayor," or "Mr. Chair", and that ain't happening. You got a chair that is allowing this people to blurt out anytime they want to, and so at the last commission meeting, two commissioners, Commissioner Grant and Commissioner Meyerhoffen, made the case, can we please start following Robert's Rules of Order? Now, if that upsets, rankles somebody's feathers, well, you know, that's just ridiculous. There's no reason why a call to follow Robert's Rules of Order should be any reason to sit there and say a commissioner should be removed from a commission. Now, and there's just, it's been total chaos on those meetings, and I have to concur with Commissioner Grant and Commissioner Meyerhoffen, that something needs to change. And I've been saying this for a long time. Now, for example, there was a vote at the last planning commission meeting, and the, one of the commissioners decided, well, you know, I really didn't, Commissioner Grant thought, you know what, I want to change my vote, so she asked, can I change my vote? And the quick answer was, no. Well, that's not Robert's Rules of Order. It was an instant, no, you can't change your vote. So what happens in that instance? It's already, the vote's been recorded, they've moved on, and now somebody wants to change their vote. And I have seen that happen in many boards and commissions where I serve, and the chair says, is there any objection? Seeing none objection, the vote is changed. If somebody speaks up, and there is an objection, then there is a vote, and it's a vote that's not debatable. That's Robert's Rules of Order. That wasn't done at the last meeting. So, when you have a commissioner sitting there saying, I would like to follow these rules a little more carefully, I think some of the stuff that people are seeing as cantankerous, or whatever else you want to call it, whatever you're disagreeing with, is because of the utter chaos that's going on at the planning commission. And I got a long list of examples here, I've been taking notes. Now, just go back to when I first learned about Robert's Rules of Order and the importance of running a meeting properly, as I was sitting on a board back in Pennsylvania, and a guy named Bill Brown kept saying, let's follow Robert's rules, let's follow Robert's rules, and we're all, come on, Bill, knock it off. So finally, the chair bought everybody Webster's 11th edition of Robert's Rules of Order, said, here, study this, we're going to show Bill what an idiot he is. So, we come to that meeting, and everybody knows it like the back of their hand, we follow it to the T, we look like we're some, you know, English parliamentarians, as we're running this meeting, and at the end of the meeting, we said, wow, that really does work. So, if a commissioner makes a position on an issue, and staff doesn't like it, they don't just sit there and start blurting out in the middle of the meeting, the chair should be says, whoa, 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 wait a minute, not your turn yet. That's what's going on here, and that's what's leading to this waste of time. And it gets frustrating when somebody's in the middle of their comments, asks a question, and then they're cut off, and they haven't had a chance to continue with their question. A question came up, somebody during the last commission meeting had to recuse, and I'm watching this meeting, and I didn't notice that Commissioner Duffel had recused, because the sequence of events was, hi, I need to recuse, but we're going to a break, and then when he came back from the break, apparently he had already recused, and he never stated what his recusal was. And I'm sitting there watching this whole proceeding going on, or how this vote's going to go, I'm figuring it's going to be three to two, four to one, I'm figuring there's five commissioners there, because as I'm watching on Zoom, I see everybody's picture there, you can't tell that somebody's recused, and I didn't know somebody had recused. And there was no, it was just a quick statement before a break, and then when they came back, nobody knew. So apparently, Commissioner Meyerhoffen asked the question innocently, well, Mr. Duffel, where did you go? And he said, well, I recused. He didn't ever answer why he recused, and my understanding is the proper procedure runs, if any of us are going to recuse, we state why. I think all of us have recognized that. So, apparently, somebody got their, you know, got a little, hit a sensitive nerve here. You ever ask somebody a question, and you say, wow, I must have struck a nerve, I must have, you know, some sensitive issue here, and it's caused them to go off, and somebody innocently didn't, had no idea, what did I say that, what's that, John Belushi, I'm not going to repeat the line, but, you know, what did I say to make you so mad? And I don't think that Commissioner Meyerhoffen had any ill intent when he asked why he recused, it was the same thing everybody else was asking as they're watching the meeting. And when he asked that question, he got cut off, he didn't get an answer to it. City attorney jumped in and said, well, sorry, we got to follow Robert's Rules of Order, you're getting into a discussion. Well, if somebody is during their commissioner time to talk, which is afforded to all the commissioners, that doesn't mean they're starting a discussion. It's a discussion when a bunch of people from staff and other commissioners start blurting out and jumping in on the meeting, and making a case that, you know, that's when you're starting to get into discussion, but the person committing that crime isn't the one, that violation isn't the one who was trying to use their time to make a point, it's when everybody else starts blurting in and turning it into a conversation. Now, when I saw this come up, you know, I'm wondering, is this just a time when we're going to sit here and say, you know, get everybody a box, the 11th edition of Robert's Rules, or whatever edition you want, give it to them, make them read it and take a test, and come back knowing how to operate it, like Sig Sipple did, the chairman of our commission? That's what's going on here, that's why we're wasting this time tonight over this stuff. And I'm going to, Ted, I am so sorry that you are going through this, and your words were very poignant when you stepped up that podium and said, what did I do? You're smearing my name all over this town, and I don't even know what I did. And you guys don't want to bring it up, and you want to bring it up later, but there's nothing to bring up unless you're going to go through a full hearing on this thing. I am, I've watched, and I saw the planning commission, you know, there's an item that comes through, and they have a lot of ex parte communications with developers, which, you know, one of my planning commissioners absolutely refused to have an ex parte communication with a developer, coming, with somebody, an applicant, coming to their project. And the, that's where the developer says, hi, I want to talk to you about this project, so, you know, you can understand it before we go into public hearing.
You're off track.
I'm not off track, this is.
This is about the planning commissioner.
This is about the planning commissioner. This is certainly about what's going on at the planning commission.
Just letting you know, for the record, I made a ruling that this is not on topics.
Okay, so I call for, what do you want to do? End debate? What are you talking about?
No, I didn't say that, I just said you're off topic.
Well, you don't have the authority to end, to tell me, I can't.
I didn't end anything, I just wanted to advise you, you're off topic.
Okay, well, that's your opinion, I'm about to make my point. Except now you've interrupted, and, you know, you're doing the same thing to me that the rest of the commission does to Ted, when he's there, Commissioner Meyerhoffen, when he's in the middle of making his point.
It's our point, it's our, it's my job as a chairman.
Scott, please, quit interrupting. It's not your job to interrupt council members.
It's my job as a chairman, I don't see any committee or commission I've ever served on that would not listen to the chair, or mayor, or commissioner that is in charge of that committee, when they said you're off topic. If you disagree with me, that's fine, but I'm putting on the record that you're off topic.
So what was I talking about that was off topic, now that you've got me off topic?
You were talking about a developer and the planning commission's decision.
Okay, so, so one of the things that Commissioner Meyerhoffen has brought up, that people have expressed as objectionable, is he doesn't want to go to, into a staff meetings and talk all about the item, and then go to the planning commission meeting and just talk about, and then just vote on it. And he made that point during the last commission meeting. Now, that's one of the things that somebody watching the meeting might think is disagreeable, if they don't agree with these points. But the conversation is supposed to take place in public. It's not supposed to take place where everybody gets together with staff, here's how you should vote on this, here's how everything should go, here's all the information, and then they just go in, and nothing gets questioned or worked out. And I remember some planning commission meetings, going, wow, that was awful quick, and now Ted and Commissioner Grant are up there, and they're starting to ask some questions, saying, no, I want to, no, I want these details in public, the public has the ability to see this. So if somebody's sitting there saying, you know, hey, he's asking questions that we don't want to ask, these should have already asked, these should have come in, and doesn't want to ask, he's in the public view, he's made the point at that last meeting, that I want to, I want this out in the public, the public has a right to hear this stuff, we're not going to do all this stuff, you know, outside the public hearing process. And to make my point on ALUC, a couple of meetings ago, it just came up, somebody, they said, hi, I want to let you know I had an ex parte communication with a developer, they called me, wanted to meet, I told them I would not meet, and they were so concerned about that, that that's the standard they had, they actually wouldn't even take the call from them. Now, sometimes on a complicated issue, you need to go do that, and I think Commissioner Meyerhoffen said that during the meeting, you know, if it's a complicated issue, then I'll go ask staff and get what I need to know. But anyhow, so, in my view, him and Commissioner Grant, and, you know, the other commissioners are doing okay, but I've just seen that the discussion that's supposed to take place at a planning commission is now starting to happen, and I concur with them in watching these meetings, that the chair needs to exercise a whole lot more control and procedure on how it's run, and sometimes it might seem awkward, but I think the chair, and I know he's capable of doing that, I just think, I don't know if he's being, if he's afraid to tell staff, hey, be quiet, until it's your turn to talk, but, so, you know, and there's all kinds of other stuff we can get into, I mean, if you're going to start, maybe what we need to do is a review of all the commissioners. So, I've gone on for quite a while here, I'm going to just leave it at that, I'm just going to reiterate that it's extremely unfair to sit there and make all these, cast all these aspersions against somebody, especially somebody who I think is doing an excellent job, has been around here a long time, and understands the city, and is knowledgeable about, you know, what's going on, and what this planning commission needs to do, and how it needs to act. And I think there's a whole lot of blame go a whole way around, and you get things straightened out on that planning commission, and you won't be having something on this agenda item that says, you know, council, Mayor Mattis putting an item on the agenda for, over removing a commissioner. So, I'll leave it at that, in case I've, I've got a few more things I could say, but I don't want to go on any longer, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. It's disappointing. The item agenda that anybody can read from the public comments without exaggerating states, current planning commission appointments, it does not say remove anybody. The discussion, it was placed on the agenda as discussion of possible actions regarding changes to the makeup of the current planning commission. It was left vague because of the closed session item. In the closed session, it was decided by three council members to take this to open session for a discussion. I think what the discussion was going to be about, and I can't foresee the future without the other council member here, was going to be an open discussion on commissioners' , you know, actions, and specifically to Mr. Meyerhoffen, for the complaint that was filed against him. I don't, what you heard up here is I would implore anyone to go watch the planning commission. I will tell you right now that the chairman runs a good meeting, the commissioners, for the most part, all have a good part in that meeting, I have no problem with any commissioners, except for the way at the end that Mr. Meyerhoffen acted. But I'm not here to make a decision on that tonight, whether it was a suspension, removal, censure, or nothing, I'm not going to make a decision on that tonight, because I don't have all the facts in front of me right now, and I don't have a full counsel to make that decision. Your assumptions up here were based on what he told you, and only he told you, and that's not right, Mr. Meyerhoffen. You ever represent the city of Desert Hot Springs, not just a person appointed you, and I hope that you see that in the future, because I respect you, and I hope you respect me, and you've confused the situation multiple times by saying, Robert's Rules of Order or Rosenberg's Rules of Order. All I was doing is correcting the fact that we run under the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which you corrected the chair at the last meeting. I wasn't trying to be flippant, I wasn't trying to call you out, all I was just trying to do is correct the information that's been put out here. Mr. Betts has said multiple times, the Robert's Rules of Order, and then Rosenberg's Rules of Order. So it's been confused by a lot of different people. I have no problem, Ms. Grant, I don't know why she's being sucked into the situation that was discussed tonight, was just about you, I have no problem with the chair, the way he runs his meeting. If you watch the meeting, yes, staff stepped in a couple of times to answer questions, it seemed like, I don't think they overstepped their bounds. Yes, sometimes you're seen by the chair when you're a staff member to be recognized, and other times, they might just jump in and say something, maybe if you're the chair of the meeting, you won't like that, you'd tell staff, and I just, tonight, it was downplayed on the way the meeting ran. I don't want to get into the meeting, because it's really not something I want to make a decision on tonight. You're appointed commissioner, all I ask is that all commissioners do their best to represent Desert Hot Springs, I, it's not my position to tell you to go visit with staff, I would encourage you to, to visit staff and know all the, all the reasons to this agenda item. It's not my position to sit here and call you and tell you you're doing a good job or a bad job, which I know there is a council member that reprimands all of the commissioners if they don't do what he feels is important. And I think that's harassment. I think there's a lot of Daisy Jane going on there, and I think there is, laws being broken by that, especially when staff members are called and harassed during the meetings, when commissioners are called and harassed during meetings, when a council member goes around and talks to multiple council members, which is against the law, on issues that are facing the planning commission. I think there's a lot of proof to all that, but we're not here to listen to that tonight, we're here to talk about what was on here, which was a commission appointment, which was discussion or possible action. I think we've discussed it to death. I don't think there's going to be a decision tonight, don't think there needs to be a decision tonight. If there is a decision tonight, doesn't mean this item can't be brought back in the future if there's another problem, and we have a problem with the chairman, and we want to bring it back and have a discussion on him. So, so be it, we can, we can downplay it and act like it's everybody else's fault, but the person that's being talked about tonight, or we can just have a professional conversation here, which is, I don't think a decision is going to be made tonight on anything. It was put on here as a placeholder, depending on what was done in closed session, one of the people in closed session had to go to the hospital, I don't think a decision can be made tonight. So there is a motion on the table, and that's to keep Mr. Meyerhoffen remain on the PC. I don't know why that motion was made, because there's no discussion to have you removed to begin with. to begin with, so.
Mr. Mayor, you certainly alluded and disput-
I did not. Please don't put words in my mouth, and please stop right now.
You'll review the tape of this meeting.
Right now, you are not going to control this meeting, and you're not gonna tell me what's in my brain. You had your time, everybody sat here and listened to you.